Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, March 26th, 2025, and I'd like to open the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 8 and 1072 HD. If you could all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is two to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the symbol with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? So, please check in with Mary Ann, two to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comments. Anybody? Seeing none, thank you. I'd like, on every single application, I will go to the audience. If for some strange reason I forget, feel free to raise your hand and say, "I have a comment," because we want to make sure everybody is heard. It's the American way, and that's the way we're going to do it. So, if for some reason I forget, just raise your hand. Charlie, would you like to read the first continued hearing into the...
Would be happy to run.
Yes.
All right, for the meeting of March 26th, 2025, and the continued hearings, the first continued hearing is 24 Secant Point Road. Owners Joshua and Nicole Delman request a variance under 174-31, land space requirements, and 174-33 setback to wetlands of the zoning bylaws to vary lot coverage and setback to wetlands to allow for construction of a single-family residence and property located in an R3 zoning district, map 124, parcel 35, Mashpee, Mass., continued from previous states at the request of the attorney.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Josh and Nicole Delman. They are the owners of 24 Secant Point Road. As the board knows, this is a vacant lot that is subject to, or it's completely in the flood zone, or I shouldn't say that, about 98% of it's in the flood zone, which requires us for new construction to seek a variance from lot coverage and the setback to wetlands. At the last meeting, the, myself and the board had it back and forth over the, you know, the various elements that are needed to be proven in order to, you know, have this board consider granting the variance. The board was stuck on two of those elements as we left that meeting. One was the hardship, and the second was the uniqueness of the lot. So, I asked the board for a continuance so I could put together an analysis to hopefully convince the board that my client met his burden in order to entitle to a variance in this case. So, I submitted to the board, you know, my letter was supporting cases. At the last meeting, the board also, you know, I feel relied heavily on the Mark Bobrowski book citing various cases in a footnote. So, I went through all of those cases to determine what they were about, how they may apply to the facts of this case, or not. So, I've also provided that analysis. As I said, I went through every case in that footnote that the board relied on or cited, so to speak. And I guess I would start, I'll start with the hardship. I honestly think it's pretty clear-cut. I mean, this is a hardship, and two reasons. One is, if we look at the Bobrowski book that the board cited above, it cites the Garagosian case. And what it says there is that when you have a use that is allowed as of right, in this case, a residential use, and you, a variance is the only way to allow the applicant or the owner to use it in the way that it's allowed in the zoning district, that is a hardship. So, in this case, we're in an R3 zoning district, the only thing that my client can do with this is build a single-family dwelling. Without the variance, he cannot build a single-family dwelling. That is a hardship. If we read the cases that were cited in Bobrowski and by this board, every one of them could have had a use, or had a use already. So, either somebody wanted to do something commercial but could do residential, so a single-family dwelling was allowed. In one case, there was a applicant who wanted to put a six-story motel on, on his property. Well, the bylaw allowed him to do a two-story motel. So, he had the right to put a two-story motel on, but the court said, "It's not a financial hardship that he can only do two, but he can't do six." In another case, an applicant wanted to put two houses on a lot where only one was allowed. And the board, and again, the court said, "It's not a hardship where he can have one single-family dwelling but not two." In this case, if the board denies the relief, my client gets zero single-family dwellings. And that's where the hardship really lies in this particular case. Notwithstanding the fact that my client paid $988,000 for a lot that may be worthless if this board does not grant him the variance, notwithstanding the fact that in 2009, as I put in my presentation, there was a letter from the then-building commissioner saying that this is a buildable lot, and my client, you know, bought this lot knowing that that was in the materials with the building department, and bought this lot, of course, before the waiting place decision, when, you know, kind of this turned its all on its head, where now we needed to account for the land subject to coastal storm flowage. But again, I think most importantly for the hardship issue, and, you know, I think it's very clear. When it prohibits development consistent with the ordinance, when the applicant can make such a showing, hardship can be found to exist. A statutory hardship is usually present when a landowner cannot reasonably make use of his property for the purposes or in the manner allowed by the zoning ordinance. Single-family dwellings are allowed as of right in the R3 zoning district. Without this variance, my client cannot build anything. So, it's not a situation where we've come up, you know, we've brought variances that have been denied by this board. Take 157 Daniels Island Road. My client asked for a variance to go over the 20% lot coverage. He could still build a house, he had to reduce it by 300 square, 220, 200, 300 square feet in order to bring it into compliance. I would say that that's a reasonable discretion of this board not to want to give that variance, because in that case, the client could still build a single-family residence, and it was not a hardship because he couldn't get the extra 200 square feet to go above lot coverage. Here, that's not the case. There is nothing that can happen with this lot. It is going to stay a vacant lot that is worthless without the variance, and we're in an R3 zoning district that allows for a single-family residence. That, I think, is, there's no gray area. I believe it is a hardship, and I don't, I think the case law supports it. Again, the cases that I think the board relied on all suggest the same thing. There is something that can be done with this lot, it's just not what the owner wants to do, or it's not the most economically beneficial. You know, you can have an eight-unit apartment building, but you can't have a 32-unit apartment building. All these cases have a use that's allowed and could have been done, or was done, on these properties, not allowing expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. You know, there was a gas station, they wanted to expand the gas station. Well, the court said, "Well, you have a gas station, you can do, you can still make it economically profitable with the gas station, we're just not going to let you expand it by variance." But they still could make use of that property in some manner, and in this case, we can't. If the variance is denied, we absolutely can't. And again, I think from the hardship perspective, I think it's very clear in that sense. So, you know, I'm happy to stick on that point if the board has any, wants to go over the hardship issue.
157 Daniels Island Road.
Yes.
Completely different. One's got a house, one doesn't. 157 has a house.
Correct.
Pre-existing, non-conforming, grandfathered house.
Correct. But that was also a reason to replace special permit. I had asked for a variance, and this board, in its discretion, said, "We're not going to give you the variance, shrink the house." But I can't shrink, I don't have a house to shrink in this case. I can't come back to this board and say, "I'm going to do something different."
So, what did we, what did we come up with? We asked you to lower it back to what percentage?
Under the 20%.
Right.
Correct.
So, what is the percent lot coverage on 24 Secant Island Road?
So, under, how we review it now, it would be 100%, because it's 100% lot coverage. Under, if we go back to your old method, I can meet your lot coverage requirement, it's under 20%.
Yeah, but we can't go back to the old one.
I understand that.
The court said we can't.
No, no, I don't disagree with what you're saying on that point.
It's apples and oranges.
Well, it's not, because, again, I can't do anything. Like, say I wanted to build a three-bedroom house, and I asked for a variance, and the board said, "Well, you can build a two-bedroom house but not a three-bedroom house, so we're not going to give you a variance."
It's grandfathered because of the house on it. There's no house on this lot.
No, but I'm talking about this lot. I'm talking about a vacant lot.
Right.
So, if I came to this board, I didn't need lot coverage variances, I didn't need any variances, but I needed a variance because it was, you know, it was too big, or I needed two bedrooms instead of three, I wanted three instead of two. If the board said, "Well, we can give you two, but we're not going to give you a variance for three," that's fine. I think that that's a discretion of this board. But here, there's nothing, nothing I can do. The fact that there's a house or not a house is really immaterial. It's whether or not...
I don't think it's a buildable lot.
It's a buildable lot with a variance.
With 100% lot coverage? We turn down people with 25% lot coverage. What about them?
Well, you don't, because...
Yeah, we say come back at 20%.
But under your old method.
The old method is gone.
I know.
The court said we couldn't do that.
But every house, every reason or place that I bring before this board has 100% lot coverage. Correct?
But there's a house on it. On pre-existing, and what do we do? Because it's grandfathered, because there's a house there, we give them the grandfathered and say, "You can't expand beyond your current footprint."
Right, I understand.
There is no footprint.
Right. But the question is, based on the hardship issue, if the law, the law that the courts say is, if you cannot do what's allowed in the zoning district, that is a hardship, isn't that exactly what this case is?
If I can help out.
All right, go for it.
I've read every page of all your case law, okay, which is like 70, right? Let's take some theories. What's the minimum lot size in this zone?
Uh, this is, it is 40,000 square feet. 40,000 square feet, correct.
Somebody has a lot today, just created today, so there's no, there's no protection.
Correct.
39,000 square feet.
Well, it wouldn't be allowed to be created today. You couldn't get a...
Well, I could, I could pull that off.
Ask Mike, you can go to the planning board and give a lot that's undersized.
I could be pulled off, and with a little stamp in the corners, it doesn't mean it's buildable, right? So, my point is, 39,000 square foot lot. I'm saying, my reason of saying this is, where does this theory end? So, a 39,000 square foot lot, I want a variance, because I have, I can't put anything on this lot.
Right. But in that particular case, that person would have known going in that they've created a lot that's not buildable.
Right, but...
Which is not Mike, which is not what it's happened to.
But the bill inspector opined to this as being as a buildable lot because of merger, had nothing to do with this issue.
What do you...
Stevens, when Stevens signed, when the bill inspector at that time, zoning enforcement officer, opined to the fact that this was a buildable lot, had nothing to do with the issue that's on point now. It had to do with the fact back then that they thought that there was a merger of two lots, but there was a street that went down the center of both of them that was a taking, and he said there wasn't a merger, because he didn't own in common. That's the reason why it was a buildable lot, not because of this. Total different issue. Here's where I, I could talk for the next three hours about my opinions of this case law, and I don't think it's going to get us anywhere. I would recommend the following. I'd like to have, and I'm hoping this is something that's workable for you, I think this is a good thing for you.
Right.
Because I'm not an attorney, I just have enough knowledge to be dangerous in law.
Sure.
Okay? And I don't, I'm not so sure if it's helping or hurting. I just know this. I think that we should ask Mary Ann, as secretary for this board, to, or David or someone, to reach out to town council, and have you talk to town council and work this, which is far above my pay grade, other than to read it and give you my opinion, which may or may not be right.
Right.
I can act like an attorney all day long, but I don't think I'm doing you a service or your client a service. I think what we need to do, and I'm recommending this board, is kick this up to town council with you.
Okay.
And you then work it out with town council. And maybe town council say, "You know what? Yes." So, the ZBA, if the town council comes back to this board and says, "You know what? For the two issues, for hardship we're talking about right now, just hardship, for hardship, his theory is correct." And I understand your theory.
Right.
It's very much built into here. But I only get bits and pieces of it, I don't get to read the whole case.
Sure.
And I get concerned when I get case law that I can't read the whole case. I only read snippets.
Well, I gave you all the cases.
Well, now, I get it.
No, no, I mean, what, I mean, I appended all the cases.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand. But my point is this, my pay grade is as follows. I know enough to be dangerous, because I've sat on the other side too many times, as far as I'm concerned. And that being said, I think somebody of far more knowledge, i.e. an attorney, i.e. town council, should interact with you and say, "I agree to your hardship case, I concur." He reports back to this board, "On the hardship, we're going to go to the next issue next, but on the hardship issue, it's beyond me and I presume the rest of this board."
Agreed.
And let town council...
Can we do that? Can we refer to town council?
Yes.
Have town, you know what? And at that point, if town council says to you, "I disagree with your theory," then someone of the knowledge, i.e. a lawyer, has said to you, "I've read the case law, and I know what I'm doing, and you're not on point, and I disagree."
Right.
Because that's how I feel, frankly, but I don't think I'm doing you a service, saying...
I understand, I appreciate that, and I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'd also like my points.
Certainly, certainly, well, I think he's got to go to the second issue.
The percent lot coverage.
Yeah.
98, 100% lot coverage?
Well, I mean, that's what we're...
With no grandfathering?
Well, I know.
What about people we turn down every, all the time?
I just think it's so...
Come back with a smaller house, under the 20%.
But it is. I can't, there's no way...
Everybody wants to build a bigger house.
No, no, Jonathan, this house is under 20% lot coverage under the old theory. There is no way to get...
The old theory's gone.
I understand, but you, I can't make the house smaller and not be 100%.
You couldn't build a shoebox.
Right.
If the house was 100 square feet, it's still...
It'd still be 100%.
Wouldn't make any issue.
So, it's irrelevant.
Yeah, the size is irrelevant, it's always going to be 100%.
So, I think we need to find out if what he's saying is correct, and if that's correct, then he meets the hardship criteria, and now we have to talk about, does that make sense, first of all? Does that make sense? Now, let's talk about...
My opinion's different from your opinion, so I'm confused. On the hardship, my opinions are different with what the attorney's saying.
But if town council...
But I want to hear what town council says.
Yeah, and town council says, "I concur with Chris, and I concur that the following. It is a hardship if, in fact, he cannot put anything on that lot." Now, this board might say, "Hey, wait a second. We still have a problem, okay, and you're going to be able to build a 10-by-10 shack, or nothing, I don't know." But he got it, he has to get by the first thing, which is the 3/4 criteria for a variance. He hasn't gotten there yet, and I'm saying he may not ever get there. But I don't want to stop him from getting there so that we can hear a variance, if in fact I shouldn't. That's all.
Yeah, I just, to Jonathan's point, I just want to make, it doesn't matter, as Scott says, it doesn't matter whether the house is 10 by 20, 1 by 1, it's always going to be 100% lot.
All I'm trying to do is, if you can't be heard for a variance because of our reasoning, i.e. hardship, this is the issue right now, that's on the table, it's hardship, then if you can't be heard, I want to make sure that somebody above my pay grade says that you don't have a hardship.
Right.
And that's town council.
I think it makes...
And where it goes from there, I don't know. We might still say no. We still have that right.
It makes all...
You understand that, Chris?
I do, I absolutely understand that.
If you get by the four issues with town council, you come back to the board, and town council says, "Oh, he's got all four issues to be heard for variance." Doesn't mean you're getting the variance.
I understand, no, I know, the four basis decisions are town council.
Doesn't mean he gets the variance. Just means he can be heard for it.
I think we need an opinion from town council, rather than take a vote on this tonight, deny, and then have him appeal.
I'm fine with that.
It's much smarter for you to go to town council.
So, the only thing is, because Dave and I have just recently run into this with town council, is that I cannot reach out to town council without getting...
I'm at, this board's going to vote, this board, if it had, do we need a vote?
To refer to town.
I'd like, I'd like to take a vote, to push it. But let's take the next thing first.
Yeah, I mean, do you want...
What's the next thing that's on the table?
Is the uniqueness of the lot or structure.
All right. So, give me your argument of uniqueness. Let's move to the next one, and then we'll vote on the hardship one with town council. Tell me your unique hardship.
Right, so...
Our reasoning.
Right, so last, last time I brought up the fact that, you know, this lot was unique because it's, it's really the only vacant, I put this in my letter, actually, look, I looked at every single lot on the GIS on Secant Point, Secant Island, and it is the only privately-owned vacant lot that is in the flood zone, that is not otherwise connected to a lot with a building on it. So, that would presumably be merged. It's the only one. And so, that in and of itself, I believe, is unique. I believe it's unique, I had this argument with Jonathan about the uniqueness of the lot versus having no structure on it. There was some back and forth about, well, the structure doesn't matter. I did provide the board with a case out of Provincetown that upheld the variance...
For a deck.
For a deck, that said the topography, the shape, the soils were absolutely not unique to any other property, and it was only because of the structure.
But you got a little handicap issue thrown in there, too.
Well, I understand that, but the base, but the base point is, is that it's not simply just, you just can't say, "The lot, the lot, the lot."
But again, where does that end? So, you're taking Secant and going, "All right, in this area, it's unique. Is it unique in the town?" I'm hearing there's another 20 or 30 lots that have the same issue you're bringing up here.
Yeah, there may be other lots on Montomosco Island.
So, I could narrow it down, you could say, "It's unique to the next-door neighbor."
No, I mean, I went through every, I went through, I went through every lot in Secant Island.
Yeah, I'm just saying...
Which is a lot of lots.
I would like to say then the following, because we could spend all night on this issue, because I have many points on that.
And I, before you do that, because I assume we're going to, this will be raised with town council, too.
Correct, that's my opinion.
I also, whether the board, you know, agrees with my assessment or not, but the uniqueness of this lot, if for zoning purposes we have to exclude the flood zone, then this is the lot, it's a triangle.
Yep.
Is that a unique, is that a uniquely shaped lot?
I, listen, and now you're going to go the argument before and after construction, I get it. I know where you're going, I get it. But why don't we just do this?
Maybe, maybe I'm totally wrong here, but when I'm, somebody says, "Unique lot," I'm thinking about whether it's square, flat, falling off, et cetera.
I don't know the definition of unique in this case. I don't know the definition.
Well, is that, is that triangle not a unique-shaped lot? Because that's the lot for zoning purposes.
That's not the lot that it is.
But it is...
That's what's left.
But it's for what's zoning, when you tell me that I have to calculate the lot size, that's what the lot looks like.
Here's my recommendation.
But anyway, I understand.
I'd like to take a vote, I'd like this board to take a vote, that we recommend that town council work with Kevin in reference to the two issues that are outstanding, which is uniqueness and a hardship, in reference to the...
I've been called worse.
Father?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
That's okay. There are worse, worse people to be called.
Exactly right. So, we, at this point in time, we take a vote, and we recommend that town council work with Chris in reference to two issues in the finding and the allowance of the, of the review of a variance for this property, which is the hardship and uniqueness.
And make a recommendation to the board.
And make a recommendation to this board as to whether there is a hardship and uniqueness, because we find the other aspects are met.
Right.
Okay?
Can I say something? Can I say something first?
Certainly.
This property was purchased under different rules, correct?
That is correct.
And it was a buildable lot under different rules.
I paid over $900,000 for it.
That's right. And I just, there seems to be some push here, or some animosity to this. I'd like to see, I mean, we've got to do everything we can to let this guy build on a $900,000 square lot, if we can, and still stay within the rules. So, I agree, we got advice from council, but I'd suggest that the tone change a little bit here.
Well, here's my concern, Mike. If we were to follow, let's say, my input after reading this document, I would say the following. I disagree with council on both issues, and I do not agree that this case law, or these cases, give the basis for what he's looking for. So, if that's where the situation, and one or two other members went with me, he'd not have a buildable lot and be denied.
Correct.
I'm trying to get it to the next level, and get it to someone that has more knowledge and ability than I do, so that if I'm going to make that decision, which is a $900,000 negative decision, then I'm right.
Well, we'll get, we'll get the advice of council, but...
That's where he's going with this.
Yeah, that's where we're going with it.
Yeah, I know, that's fine.
That's what I want to do.
Because I read this, and I wasn't convinced either.
I don't want to make the decision, because a decision, I don't believe, I believe my decision is not based on enough knowledge when you're talking about this magnitude of an issue. Okay? So, it should be taking up the ladder. That's my opinion.
All right.
I think we all agree.
I agree with that.
So, I, can I get a motion for what I just discussed? Or do we need to say it again?
Charlie, go for it.
Sure. The motion would be to refer this, the board, now, zoning appeals, refer this matter relative to item one, whether the property meets the criteria for a variance because it has unique conditions, and number two, whether there is or is not a substantial or financial hardship to town council to discuss with council for the petitioners and report back to the zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second that.
Nice.
I'm fine with that.
All those in favor?
Yeah, but, all right, let me just, could I add to that? Now, let's assume, let's assume you meet with town council, the town council makes a determination. Are we bound by the determination?
Only that he can move forward and have us listen to his variance request, we then can deny his variance.
We'll be right back in the position now, but with town council's information.
Right.
I'm good with that.
In conjunction with this, we're also going to continue this.
Correct.
Right, okay. So, we have the motion?
So, the motion's pending.
Well, we just voted on it, right?
We voted, and it's approved.
So, now, would you like to request an extension, counselor?
Yes, I would. So, the only question I have for the board, and I don't know if it's something that's going to be discussed tonight or not, because we're only going to one meeting in a month at this stage, I know our next meeting is April 23rd, I don't know if that's enough time for town council. Is the, do you know if the next, the May meeting is going to be the first meeting, or the fourth, or the...
What's the new schedule?
I don't know, I'm relying on Mary Ann to say that. I don't know. I'm relying on Mary Ann to say that.
Why don't we continue to the next meeting, and if that's not possible, we can adjust.
If the Board's okay with that, I'm okay with that.
14th?
The 23rd.
As long as we don't have, uh, a decision de facto here, I mean, I'm sure you would never do that.
No, I always sign it.
Okay. I just don't wanna be in a position where we didn't, and...
Either May 14th or May 28th.
May 14th or May 28th. It's up to you.
May 14th is fine with me, if that's the meeting that the Board's gonna have.
When does this Board wanna meet again? May 14th or May 28th?
It's up to Mary Ann, as far as I'm concerned.
We don't get to decide at the week.
14th, work? All right, 14th.
Press line. So, Mr. Chair, I'd ask for a continuance to May 14th, and I'll sign the, the waiver of time.
Charlie, could you make a motion to agree with the request of the applicants?
Continue to May 14th.
And also on the table is a motion to agree with the request of Council relative to continuing this matter for further determination by the Board.
Till May 14th.
Till May 14th.
Second.
May 14th, thank you. I'm sorry.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Papers? Yep.
All right.
We're not ready.
Oh, we...
Did you?
I, I, I agree with him, the way he presented it.
Okay, we're over here.
You decide anything on the...
Yes, we do, yeah.
Yeah, she's getting, well, I'm not sure if we do, but...
Yes, we do.
Counselor does.
So... So Scott stepping down on the next one.
Yes.
Next two.
Next.
Yes.
Vote to Wilson.
Correct. Yeah, you want it?
What is it? What date is it?
It's not moved. 26. Because you know what? It's gonna eventually get there anyway. Wouldn't you agree? Yeah, absolutely.
Who else is on this case?
Who was on this case?
I have five. Don't even have to say, because I have five regular members. That's why I didn't say it, William.
There you go.
Jesus. All right, so sitting on the next two, well, next one, why don't we just say next one, which is 23 Wilson Grove, would be, how about we start with, you know, we're gonna use Mike, because everybody know that Mike is probably gonna be leaving this Board, so we're gonna utilize his services, because we wanna learn from him before he leaves. So it'll be the four regular members and Mike.
Sounds good.
All right, so that being said, um, George, would you like to read 23 Wilson Grove into the record, please?
Let me read. 23 Wilson Grove, owners Gary M. and Susan R., sorry, name, Gilberti, trustees of the GSG Hominy Trust of 2017, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family structure on property located in Pompanas Overlay District and R-3 District Map 118, parcel 94, Mashpee Mass. Continued from 3/12/25, hearing at the request of the determiner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, again. Members of the Board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Crane, representing the applicants for 23 Wilson's Grove. With me tonight is Brian Foley from Clancy Construction, the contractor for this project. So what we brought before you is a raise and replace under 174-17.1 and 174-33. The lot itself is located in the Pompanas Overlay District, which has a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, lot frontage of 60 feet, front yard setback of 25 feet, side and rear yard setbacks of 15 feet, maximum lot coverage of 25%, uh, max building height of 30 feet, and there is a 50-foot setback to wetland required. Uh, this lot is wholly located within the flood zone, so for zoning purposes, there's zero square feet of lot area. Um, as I think a lot of the Board knows, with Wilson's Grove, these lots are very, very, very small. Um, the actual total land area is 3,374 square feet. But again, for zoning purposes, because we're in the flood zone, it's zero square feet. And again, for zoning purposes, because it's in land subject to coastal flowage, we have 100% lot coverage. Now, if you go under the old method for reference, the existing lot coverage is 36%. The proposed lot coverage is 36%. So the, it was reduced as part of, that's why we need to revise the plan, to bring it down in conformance with what is existing. Um, there are certainly, you know, multiple, uh, non, existing nonconformities. I've marked out in red, there's a deck here that is only 3.6 feet off of the property line. There is a shed here that's less than 15 feet, less than 15 feet, and we're only .6, you know, we're .6 inches from the property line here. I marked these in red, because these are both going away. These are going to be removed from the, uh, from the, from the proposal, from the project. So we're gonna eliminate both of these nonconformities, remove the shed, remove the deck. The house itself is only seven feet off the front yard setback. It's only 5.5 feet off of this side and 12.3 off of this side. So, again, it is a tight lot, it's all... So we are improving the front yard setback. We're going from, uh, seven feet, and we're going to, uh, 12.8 feet. So, again, nonconforming at seven feet, 12.8 is what's proposed. We are improving, whether it's the house or the shed, we're improving this setback. We're going from 12.3 to, uh, 13.4. Uh, we're also improving this .6, because we're going to be approximately, um, 14 feet off of the, 14.2 off of the rear yard. So again, we're only six inches here, we'll be 14.2. And again, the house will be 4.5, but again, that's better than when, than where that deck is. So we are making what I think is some significant improvements to the, to the setbacks. We are also making significant improvements to the structure itself. We're in the flood zone, the existing house is not flood zone compliant. The new house will be flood zone compliant. This is an old, old structure that is not building co-compliant. The new structure will be building co-compliant. There will be an IA system installed as part of this project. It's been approved by the Board of Health. This project has also been approved by the Conservation Commission. And also, and Brian, if there's any questions, there is storm water management proposed for this, this lot, uh, where there is none, uh, currently existing. So, I've also provided the Board with, you know, as usual, with photographs of the various houses around the neighborhood. Um, you know, there's a lot of structures that are similar to what we're proposing. They're two stories, they're skinny. Um, that's 26 Wilson's Grove, that's 30 Wilson's Grove, all two, all two-story houses, 29 Wilson's Grove, two stories, very similar, 39 Wilson's Grove, which I don't wanna say, but was granted a variance by this Board not that long ago. Um, 19 Wilson's Grove was given a special permit to raise and replace, two stories. So, you know, I think it is, you know, 22 Wilson's Grove, two stories. So very, you know, I, you know, there's 18, 18, 6, and 12 Wilson's Grove Road, all two stories compatible to what we're proposing. And amazingly enough, I've never, I think it's the first project that I've brought where it's had this many support letters. Um, usually have one or two, I think we have eight, nine, or 10 letters from people on Wilson's Grove who all support this project. So again, we are improving nonconformities, we're not creating any new nonconformities, we're gonna be flood zone compliant, we're gonna be building co-compliant, we're getting the IA system, we're getting storm water management, and approved by the Conservation Commission. So all in all, when this Board has to find three things under the raise and replace, whether there's sufficient parking, in this case, a residential zone requires two parking spaces, which we have, no, no creation of any new nonconformities, which we are not creating any new ones, and that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would argue that what we're doing is not only not more substant, not more substantially detrimental, but actually improves, improves the site. So with that, you know, Brian and I are here to, happy to answer any questions.
So why don't we read letters into the record, please?
I've got this stuff right here. We have, uh, Board of Health comments, we have Conservation comments, and we have a butter comments. Okay, so let me go Board of Health, Conservation, and Butter. 23 Wilson's Grove, Board of Health, property is deed restricted to two bedrooms. Our plans show two bedrooms, septic upgrade to IA 2 bedroom system with sampling requirements of meeting 19 milligrams per liter nitrogen per local regulation. Uh, second, Conservation Department, uh, 23 Wilson's Grove. The Conservation Commission issued an Order of Conditions, OOC, approving this raise and replace at the 3/6/25 public meeting. The project meets performance standards for land subject to coastal storm flowage under Mashpee's Charter 172 Wetland Bylaw, OOC, was issued on 3/19/25. And we have some butter comments. We can all read some. We can all read some.
Yep.
I can start. I got one here from 25 Wilson's Grove. It looks like Sherry and Manuela and I forgot the last name. Juvea, maybe something like that. Okay, it stated... Okay, it's dated January 10th, 2025, and it's in reference to Special Permit Request, 23 Wilson's Grove, Mashpee, Mass. "I'm writing to enthusiastically support the raise and replace special permit request submitted by our neighbors Susan and Gary Gilberti for their proposed renovation project at 23 Wilson's Grove. As residents of 25 Wilson's Grove, over a decade, for over a decade, we've had the pleasure of knowing the Gilbertis as dedicated members of our community who genuinely cherish our beachside haven. Over 15-plus years, we've watched their children grow and have celebrated many milestones along the way, from the marriage of their son to the welcoming of new pets and the birth of grandchildren. The Gilbertis have always been wonderful and considerate neighbors and friends. Their commitment to maintaining the natural beauty of our neighborhood and driving improvements for our street, uh, when necessary, is unwavering. Their planned renovations will allow their home to expand as their family has and continue to grow with them in the years to come. The plans uphold the coastal character of the Grove, are incredibly well thought out, and promise to enhance the overall aesthetic and value of our street. A benefit to all of us residing on Wilson's Grove and in Mashpee's Pompanas area. We are confident the Gilbertis project will be a positive addition to the Wilson's Grove, and respectfully ask that you approve their special permit request. Sincerely, Sherry and Manuela." And again, it's Juvea, maybe. 25 Wilson's Grove.
Do you want to read the next one?
I'll get the next one. Next is, uh, a letter dated 3/10/2025 to Mary Ann Romero from Michael Pierciak. Uh, the message, "Good morning, Mary Ann. My name is Michael Pierciak. I am the owner of 19 Wilson Grove in Mashpee. I am writing to you regarding the above referenced addresses. Uh, I have spoken with Dave Morris about my concerns with the proposed raise and replace of the houses at 23 and 25 Wilson Grove. He suggested I email you to put my concerns in writing and on record. Before I start, I would like to say that I am not against a homeowner wanting to rebuild their home. However, I do have some issues with what has been proposed. In conjunction with this letter, I plan to be at the March 12th ZBA hearing to voice my concerns in opposition to these issues. Our street is, shall we say, a little unique regarding the very small lot sizes. Due to the tiny lot sizes, I really don't agree or feel it should be allowed to increase the lot coverage as proposed. Along with that, I feel the building heights 30-foot maximum can and should be partially reduced as to not negatively affect the light and air quality of my property. Light and air conditions are by right protected by town bylaws via 30-foot height limit. I feel that a revised proposal with a reduction in lot coverage, a reasonable house design, smaller house size, and a location on the lot could alleviate some of these imposing issues. The light issue is especially a sensitive one. Within the past two years, the beach goes at Wilson's Grove have to now deal with an afternoon shadow that casts over the large portion of the beach due to a newly constructed house. I am concerned that the proposed houses will do the same with my property. By trade, I am a developer who has built several homes in and around the Boston area. I have dealt with neighbors and abutters when I have applied the variances and/or special permits. It was always a priority of mine to work with these people to come up with an amicable outcome. I hope the governing bodies in Mashpee also see it this way. In conclusion, it would be my intention for the Building Commissioner and the ZBA to respectfully consider my concerns and address them as best they can. Thank you, Michael Pierciak, uh, with his telephone number."
Thank you. We'll have to read the next one.
And I have, uh...
Aaron has one, if you want her to read one and take a break.
Actually, I have, I have two, two others, three others that are supportive. Let me just go into them.
They're 25, aren't they?
Some of them are 25, Charlie.
Yeah, you wanna make sure you get 23.
Butter to 23 Wilson's Grove.
I think there's only one left.
Is it, uh...
There should be six.
Well, one is related to the special permit for 23 Wilson's Grove, uh, and it is from Bill Cahill. Uh, it's dated, uh, it's received January 2, 2025. "Dear Chairman Bonvy and all Zoning Board members, as abutters, neighbors, homeowners at 15 Wilson's Grove and 17 Wilson's Grove, we are writing to express our support for the proposed special permit pursuant to Mash General Laws Chapter 40A9 and Town of Mashpee zoning bylaws Section 17417.1, 17424C, request for the residential construction project at 23 Wilson's Grove. Susan and Gary Gilberti have contracted with Clancy Construction to design and build a new home. Because Clancy Construction recently completed a raise and replace project at 18 Wilson's Grove, they are familiar with the complexities involved with coordinating a project of similar size and scope on Wilson's Grove. Throughout their recent project, Clancy Construction did an outstanding job of coordinating the project from beginning to end, adhered to town requirements, and addressed the needs of the neighborhood. Clancy Construction's onsite crew and office staff were outstanding and respectful of the building process. Longtime Wilson's Grove homeowners Susan and Gary Gilberti have had a positive impact on Wilson's Grove because of their active involvement with the Wilson Grove Homeowners Association and their pride in homeownership. The Gilbertis wish to build a home that may accommodate their growing family. Planned improvements are well thought out and reflect the charm and uniqueness of Wilson's Grove and the aesthetics of Pompanas. We respectfully request that the special permit pursuant to Mash General Laws, Chapter 40A9, and Town of Mashpee zoning bylaws, Section 17417.1, 17424C, be granted to Susan and Gary Gilberti. Thank you in advance for your thoughtful consideration of this request. Sincerely, Bill and Betsy Cahill."
Do we have any others?
Yes.
For 23?
I have one.
Well, Sharon, why don't you read it?
Okay. I have one from Joe and Laurie Mansonelli of 18 Wilson's Grove dated March 11th. "Dear members of the zoning board, I am writing to express my support for the raise and replace special permit requested submitted by my neighbors Gary and Susan Gilberti regarding their property located at 23 Wilson Grove in Mashpee. As owners of 18 Wilson's Grove, which is a year-round residence, I believe that granting this permit is in the best interest of Mashpee and the neighborhood residents of Pompanas. I would also like to note that the general contractor, who would be heading up this project, Clancy Construction, is one of the best builders on Cape Cod. Clancy Construction recently completed the ground-up construction of our home in Mashpee, and their work was outstanding. Superior construction and top-quality work in every respect of the project. They paid attention to detail, strictly adhered to every rule and regulation, and took great pains to make sure the neighbors were impacted as little as possible. I wholeheartedly recommend that you grant the Gilbertis their permit to build, and I'm confident that their home would be a great addition to the Pompanas community. Sincerely, Joe and Laurie Mansonelli, 18 Wilson's Grove, Mashpee, Mass."
Do we have any others?
I have three others that should have been submitted to the Board.
I have, there's one we haven't read. I don't think it's from the Cahills?
Nope, that one just got read in, I think.
Okay.
So I'm wondering why we don't have those.
The rest are 25s, aren't they?
No, maybe they're just confused. Maybe you think they're 25s, and they're really 23s.
Well, are we certain they were submitted? I don't want to read them.
Yeah, I'm sure. I emailed all of these.
This one says 25.
Well, then they have to be read. If we're certain they were submitted, we need to read them.
This is 25.
Yeah, I have this 25.
This is 25.
Does it say 23 in the...
Says 25.
All the rest were 25.
Does this one say 25?
Are they 23?
25.
They need to be read into the record, then.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident they were all submitted.
So let's read them into the record, please.
I got one. I'm passing the rest down. I got one dated, um, December 31st, 2024. Um, the subject is 23 Wilson Grove. "Dear members of the zoning board, as a neighbor residing at 4 Wilson's Grove and co-owner of the fa, a family cottage at 32 Wilson's Grove, I am writing to express my strong support for the special permit request submitted by Susan and Gary Gilberti for the residential construction project at 23 Wilson's Grove. I believe this project will be a wonderful asset to our neighborhood and the broader Pompanas region of Mashpee. The proposed design is both aesthetically pleasing and respectful of the coastal character of our community, and will enhance the overall appearance and value of the property while harmonizing with the existing homes in the area. I urge the zoning board to approve the special permit request for 23 Wilson's Grove. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Bradford Crosby, 4 Wilson Grove, Mashpee, Mass."
Okay, I got one from Jean Roca, 2 Wilson's Grove. Stated January 6th, 2025, "Project Special Permit Request, Wilson's Grove, Mashpee, Mass. This correspondent expresses my full support for the proposed special permit request to construct a new residence at 23 Wilson's Grove. As a year-round resident at 2 Wilson's Grove for the past 39 years, I understand the unique character of our street. Our community fosters a strong sense of neighborliness, uh, much like a supportive family. I have observed the Gilberti family's plans, and I believe their proposed construction will seamlessly integrate with the existing character of Wilson's Grove. I wholeheartedly endorse this project. Sincerely, Jean Roca, 2 Wilson's Grove, Mashpee, Mass."
Do we have one more, I think? Do we have one more, I think?
We have one more from John, excuse me, from Joan and John Lestuziak, if I pronounced that correctly. To the zoning board of appeals, Mashpee, Mass, special permit, 23 Wilson's Grove. I'm writing to express my support for the proposal, special permit request to construct a new home at 23 Wilson Grove. As a lifelong resident of this wonderful neighborhood, I have seen many changes over the years. However, one constant has remained, a strong sense of community and the respect and the kindness that each neighbor demonstrates towards one another. It's clear to me that the Gilberti family has thoughtfully designed a home that will be a beautiful addition to our street. Their plans are complimentary, are complement to the existing character and charm of the neighborhood. Us and I support this request and look forward to the completion of their new home, of this new home. Sincerely, Joan and John Lestuziak, 3 Wilson's Grove, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, so we have conservation. Did we read conservation in the record?
Oh, yeah. We did. The Board of Health.
Do we have anything else that needs to be read in the record?
I think so.
Okay, board questions. I have a couple, real quick.
Yeah, yes.
So, first of all, your proposed recharge basin, right? The perk test, if you look at TP1, you're within like a foot of groundwater. Excuse me. My concern, and then you're, I presume you're bettering the situation, so I'm okay with it, but I just want you to know that in a rain event or in a serious event, that's probably going to be overflowing and not working very well.
Yeah, we, we do understand. We're looking at adding another recharge basin if it actually improves the site. I do know, overall, we're decreasing the imperviousness and we're adding a recharge basin and connected gutters where there weren't none.
I'm just concerned if you look at TP1, you're like this much under the basin. You don't have much storage.
Totally understand.
Another thing, and this certainly isn't our lane, just a recommendation. I think you've done great with the plan, especially better than it was when I looked at it before. You were going from 36 lot coverages up to like 41%. For me, that was a non-starter. But anyway, you come in your front stairs, front door presumably, because it's the front stairs, there's a vent right to your right.
The septic vent.
Exactly. You're throwing, you've got a sledgehammer into the, into the tank, throwing air into the system, coming out a vent, which I know has got a filter on it, but you don't want to recommend, how are you? Come in and enjoy my house. I don't know what that smell is.
It's, it's, it's a point that we're examining now. It was kind of an economy thing to keep it at the lowest point of the system, but we are looking at it.
May not be a great welcoming manner for your guests. Just giving you a heads up.
I was told the charcoal filter would have no odor to it, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We'll examine that, thank you.
Good. Other than that, I can tell you that I'm impressed with the plan. It's a great improvement over where it was before. If there's another board question, I'm going to go to David and to the audience.
No, I just, I'm glad you shrunk it down. I'm in support of it.
You saw the light?
Yes, yeah, well, again, you know, I know David and I talked about this project. That was obviously one of his concerns. Obviously, it's one of the board's concerns. So.
David.
One last question. I think you probably said this, there are dry wells, correct?
Oh, yeah, yes, sir. Just, yes, there are.
Yes, there are.
David, thoughts?
Sure. Yeah, I agree with what the chairman just said. I mean, it's, it's a vast improvement. You brought the lot coverage, you've done everything that we, that needed to be done, to be corrected. I will address the height issue is not, nothing to do with the board, but I want to tell your client that I will require an elevation certificate on the building from original grade at the frame inspection. Okay, so that'll be inspected, that'll be during the permitting process. Everything else that I have is very quibblesome and not even worth mentioning.
Okay, I just want to say one thing before I go to the audience. This board so far looks to be in favor of this application, and I can tell you, for me, the reason why, you're building a code compliant new home, which is flood compliant, and you put it in an IA system, and you're not increasing lot coverage at all. For me, that's win-win-win. You're not increasing any more, any more nonconformities, win-win-win-win, right? So I don't need to hear from you, from people around the world saying to me, how could you approve an improvement like that on a small lot? Well, you know what? It's made it better as far as I'm concerned.
And just a, just a quick, I don't want to belabor it, but to quickly address the neighbor's point, obviously, he was concerned about the increase in lot coverage, so we've addressed that by not increasing lot coverage. The height, the shade, I mean, we're.
Well, I'm, if he's in the audience, we'll hear from him next.
But the shade is not, shading is not.
I understand.
A zoning bylaw concern.
So, audience, anyone in the audience having to say in reference to this application? If you do, please come up to the microphone.
Name and address.
Yes, name and address, and your involvement in the project.
In three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Michael Pierzak. I'm at 19 Wilson Grove. My only concern I, that I have is the actual location of the house on the lot, being so close to the road. The new constructions that we've had over the past two, three years, it seemed, you know, four, five, six, seven feet from the road, and I'm just concerned that the projects moving forward, 23, 25, and there's going to be a few more, if we keep jamming them to the front of the lots, then it's just, it's, I'm going to feel like I'm living in the back bay, you know, when I walk down the street with, with just houses crammed to the middle of the street. I can't understand why this particular house can't be moved towards the back of the lot.
But I correct, Member of the Month Counselor, we're not getting closer to the street.
We're actually moving it further.
The house is getting further, so the applicant is actually on his own, is saying to this board, I'm going to move the house back a little further.
Right, five feet. I get it, but it's still.
So if we look at the option and, and we look at the existing building, he's improving the situation.
Right, well, the way I look at it is there's plenty of room on the back lot to move the house back just to, to stop.
Well, you've got a septic system back there, you've got, you know, a sledgehammer system back there, you've got a deck back there. You'll see with the board's decision when we go to the board. I, for one, am okay with where the house sits, as one member.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, I'm going to go back to the board one time here. Anybody else on the board?
I'm good.
Okay, I'd like to get a motion to close the, did I go everywhere I was supposed to go?
Yes.
Okay, let's close the public hearing, please. Motion.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All's in favor. All right, want a motion for the application, please?
I can do it.
Here you go.
Motion relative to 23 Wilson's Grove. Owners Gary M. and Susan R. Gilberti, trustees of the GSG Nominee Trust of 2017, request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure. The new single-family structure on property located in the Papaneset Overlay District in R3 District Map, 118 Parcel 94, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 40A Section 9. Number two, plot plan, 23 Wilson's Grove, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Strong Tree Engineering, date 1/23/2020, 2025, stamped and signed by Justin J. Lamaro, Civil Number 47377. Building plans, prepared for 23 Wilson's Grove, Gilberti Residence, prepared by Clancy Construction, Inc., dated 3/6/2025. Four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, Chapter 175 of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 17417.1 and 17433 that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Great, thank you so much, everybody, and.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Chris, what did we settle on for? Because I'm looking at your letter regarding 25. What did we settle on?
Yeah, April 23, I'd like, if it's available.
We got to talk to the boss. We got to talk to the boss.
Yeah, she's in charge.
You've got it.
You don't have Ron Steamans.
What? That's fine with me.
What?
I'm never worried about my name not being on a document, unless it has something to do with me getting money. Right, here you go.
You got to cut. Put it where Bob is, Bob Cashian.
Yes, yeah, instead of Bob. When it comes back, I'll cross out Bob, put mine there, because Mike was on this and the four regular members.
Here you go, George.
Thank you.
Make sure they sign, don't sign in Bob's.
Got it. Send that down to Mike if you would.
We may want to frame that.
When's he elected?
What is this?
Oh.
All right. Okay, here we go.
Now he is. All right, so we'll do.
Find a spot.
All right, so the next one will be Wilson Grove, which will be an extension. Charlie, you want to read that one? On sitting on that will be four regular members and Charlie.
Daniel's Island Road, Wilson's Grove. 25. 25 Wilson's Grove, owners Sari J. Rivera Revocable Trust and Manuela G. Rivera Revocable Trust, request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family structure on property located in the Papaneset Overlay District and R3 District Map, 118 Parcel 92, Mashpee, Mass, continued from three 12/25 hearings at the request of the attorney.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Kray, representing the applicant for 25 Wilson's Grove Road. This is a very similar project to 23, so we're revising plans to make it consistent with what this board is looking for, so we just haven't been able to finalize those in time. So I'm asking for April 23. I think it's going to be a similar review as what we just had, so I don't expect this to be a, you know, an hour-long discussion.
Mary Ann, thoughts, please?
Do we have time?
Okay, so you're asking for an extension till?
April 23.
April 23. Charlie, would you like to make that?
Motion before the board is to extend the time for this hearing at the request of counsel relative to 25 Wilson's Grove to April 23.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Somebody's going to get Scott.
Scott's here.
Scott's here.
Welcome back, Scott. Sounds like a welcome back, Carter. You know what I'm talking about.
Huge.
Okay. I can't read the word she sends to me on my computer, just too, it's too tough on the eyes. I don't know, maybe this. Wait it, before you get to Daniel's Island.
It goes down to Charlie, I think, right? After Johnson?
Yes.
I believe so. Spot stepped down.
Charlie?
Okay.
Sign that.
Oops, sorry.
What happened to George?
What did I try to watch him?
Mary Ann, did I date that? Am I supposed to date that while I signed?
Geez. That says date.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you put the date on it? Okay, good. All right, so moving forward, five regular members sitting. Charlie, would you read 119 Daniel's Island Road into the record, please?
I would be happy to. New hearing for March 26, 2025, 119 Daniel's Island Road. New Seaberry Homes LLC request a variance under 17433 of the zoning bylaws in Mass General Laws, Chapter 13140. Proposed construction of a single-family dwelling and associated site work shall be set back at least 50 feet from any water or wetland on property located in an R3 and within the New Seaberry Special Permit District, 1964, Map 105, Parcels 285 and 286, Mashpee, Mass.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Mills. I represent New Seaberry Homes. Here with me tonight is Brian Yurgatian from BSC and also Nick Delanis, who's the Vice President of New Seaberry. But I'm not here to make the presentation on the, on the variance application itself, but I'm here to share some information with you. And if I, with the, with the indulgence of the board, Mr. Chairman, I just have a little bit of an anecdotal thing I, I want to share with the, with the board if I could. So as a young lawyer, you know, out of Philadelphia, I returned back to Falmouth back in the 80s, and I was thrown to the wolves. I was thrown before the Falmouth Town Meeting to argue against the zoning change. And a gentleman came up to me afterwards who knew my family and knew me and said, "Don't be illegal eagle." And I wasn't really sure exactly what he meant by that, and I pondered it for a while, and I, I realized that what he meant was, is show respect for the board that you're appearing before, and don't be the brightest bulb in the room, and if there's a path forward, pursue the path forward. And, you know, with that anecdote, I want to suggest to the board that I'm not really sure why we're here, because this property has been within the purview of the special permit since 1964. There's nothing in the special permit that subjects this lot to that particular zoning ordinance that we're, say. In fact, all of the lots in the special permit area are exempt from zoning setbacks. This is a zoning setback bylaw that speaks to wetlands, but nevertheless, because it's in your zoning bylaw, it's a zoning setback. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share and at least make part of the record, because we do intend to proceed with our application, but I think it's incumbent upon me to share with you the special permit from 1964 and present that into the record as part of the record.
Whatever, whatever makes you happy.
It does, it thrills me, actually. But. The special permit.
That's why we're here.
The special permit decision and then the following documents all the way up to 2010, and none of them suggest that the, the lots in New Seaberry are subject to setback requirements as proposed this evening. I'm kind of new to this particular case, so I haven't had a chance to, to speak to David about it.
Does David have those documents that are in your hand?
Uh, well, I don't know.
No.
Yeah.
My, my reason for that is, is David made the decision for this application to come here.
Okay.
So it would seem to me it's very important that he has those.
I agree. Shall, shall I give them to David? I can make them available.
That's up to you and David.
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea. That'd be a good idea.
And I'd like to enter him into the record.
I'm sorry.
It's a shame that he didn't have them before, because I can't speak for David, but there's a possibility, I guess, that you wouldn't even have been here. But I don't know that. I can only tell you that it's a shame he didn't have them before.
I agree, and I've only been in the case for a few days, and I tried to reach out to him today, which is a little bit late in the game, but nevertheless, I feel it's important for me to, to share this with you. And, you know, with that said, I guess, I'll turn it over to Brian Yurgation to, to make the case in chief.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Yurgation, professional engineer with BSC Group. Here on behalf of New Seaberry Homes. We are seeking a variance under Section 174-33 of your zoning bylaw, which reads, "Any building, structure exclusive of fixed or floating piers, wharves, docks, bridges, or boardwalks shall be set back at least 50 feet from any water or wetland defined by Mass. General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40." So in this particular case, this relief is necessary because the project is, the entire site, which is 2.23 acres of land, is located within land that is subject to coastal storm flowage, 100% of it. What I will say about the project is that we have, we've obtained the approval from the Board of Health. We are putting in a nitrogen-reducing innovative alternative system, microfast 0.75. We've been approved by the Board of Health. We've been issued an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and we went through probably seven, nine months back and forth with the commission. They, they asked us to reduce the house, reduce the impacts, all of which we did, ultimately, which is why we, we were issued the, the order of conditions was issued. Justification for it? Site plans have been presented to your consideration, and the result, like I said, nearly a year's worth of design and permitting. But we believe that lot shape and topography are 100% of the reason why we cannot comply with this. If the entire property is considered a wetland, how could we keep 50 feet away from it? We couldn't. It's impossible. Furthermore, the topography, if this site were, had a higher elevation, we would not be inland subject to coastal storm flowage. Thus, we would be able, we wouldn't require this relief. In addition to, I just want to say for the record, I know that you don't look at the prior versions of how methodology for calculating law coverage, but if you were just taking a look at how much impervious area is on the lot and divided it by the 2.23 acres that we own, it would come out to 3.9%, which is incredibly low. Because it is, it is two lots. And, you know, lastly, I just want to say that, just to reiterate what Attorney Mills had said, I mean, this property is subject to a special permit issued by the town, 1964, which gave New Seaberry the ability to not have to consider those zoning setbacks, so. And, you know, as the attorney stated, that, that's why we're here, it's a setback issue.
So, Mr. Mills, I'd like to say two things, if I may. First thing is, is this board, in order to even hear a variance, right, we have to find the 3/4 specific items that you meet that criteria, right? So that'd be the first thing this board will do. But the next thing I have, the question I have really down at earthy is, David, do you want to take some time to read those, or do you have, why don't?
I can comment.
Yeah, why don't you give us your comments? I think it's important that the board understands why they're here.
Alright, so, as you know, we've, the setback to wetlands has changed recently, and it's pretty famously has been changed. I've always enforced the 174-33 to New Seaberry Special Permit Area. It's never been challenged, basically, the difference here is that this requires a variance where the other ones would require a finding. So there's a big difference.
And due to the fact that there was something on the lot already?
Right, so.
That was already within.
That's the difference with this, with this, with this thing. But the one, the first case tonight was all about the same thing. And, but the difference I see here is that you got the coastal bank. You know, from just what I'm looking at, it's, what's tonight, is the coastal bank is, is a reason to consider a wetland. I think this is considered wetlands whether it's in the flood zone or not. I mean, I don't necessarily agree with, just because it's in a flood zone, it's a wetland, but that's what we're bound to do now. Alright, so the major difference between this and any other proposal came in, coming from New Seaberry, was it didn't require a variance.
If I could, Dave, one important distinction, some, one thing I just want to correct that you said. We are not in a coastal bank. We are 250 feet away from the top of the coastal bank. We are more than 75 feet away from the edge of the bordering vegetative wetlands. And we're more than 150 feet away from the edge of the salt marsh. We are not near any wetlands, and Conservation Commission made sure of that. Okay, we're here purely.
I am, I am, I am incorrect on that, just looking at that. I am incorrect on that, so.
So, but you are in, within 50 feet of a wetland?
As defined, correct. As created.
As defined by a judge? That's the problem.
To me, it's an external, it's an external setback to your lot.
So, Mr. Mills, tell me, it seems to me your argument is that there is an outstanding special permit which exempts you from any further zoning requirements, i.e. setback from what?
Setback requirement, that's, that's correct. And there's no exception for it being a setback to a wetland.
Understood. And David, your opinion is that they are under that part of the criteria of our zoning bylaw?
Yeah, I've been sending every, every, every.
Is he zoning enforcement, so we have to hear that, so that, so our next step?
But there's nothing in, but there's nothing in there that says that, you understand?
I get it, but zoning enforcement officers brought it to this board, this board now has to consider a variance, so we have to go through the four steps, alright? So here's the first one. Okay, so, so we're going to go forward with a variance request for the applicant. First thing, property owner will experience substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Is that correct? And I'm going to go around the board.
In this case, I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
Substantial hardship for what?
Financial.
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 Financial hardship.
If they can't build on it? Yes. If, if we, no, if we do not, the basis of this variance is built on 3/4, I break them into four. But it's still the three, I bifurcate half into the four. It's the same thing. So we have to find, as we've found in other variances, that they meet this criteria before we even listen or hear the variance request. So the first question is, the property owner will experience financial hardship, hardship financial or otherwise. And that hardship is not based on the fact, oh, they can't build the house, so they're going to lose money. That's not a final, financial hardship for a variance.
What's a financial hardship?
You know what, I've been six ways to Sunday. Mr. Mills, what would be a financial hardship, forgetting about this lot? What would be a financial hardship for a variance in your opinion?
A financial hardship would be that there's no other practical use for this residential lot.
Well, we've heard your predecessor, who sat in your chair, say the same thing, but I'm not so sure. I've got some language from Bobrowski that disagrees with that, and I tend to read his book on most things. So, but I'm okay with the fact that if you think there is a financial hardship, you would be in favor of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I've got a no, no, yes, correct?
Yep.
I've got, I don't see a high financial hardship.
No.
So you've, so you've got one, so why don't we go down each one, just to make sure that the applicant understands where he's at? So that's the first one, so the first one is four to one, against. Next one, the variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good.
I don't think so.
Scott?
I don't think there's, no, I don't think it would cause.
I'm not sure it would.
Alright, Billy?
Say again?
The variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good.
It will not.
I concur.
I concur too.
So there's 5-0 in favor. Next one, the variance will not substantiate derogate from the intent of the ordinance. Remember, the ordinance is a 50-foot setback from wetlands.
I agree it will not.
I, I don't think it will.
Okay, Jonathan?
I think it will.
You think it will? Billy?
No.
I think it will.
They're asking for a 50-foot, Barry?
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, what you're asking for is total rescission of that 50, in that you are at zero.
Correct.
So you're at, looking for a 50-foot relief.
Oh, no.
Correct?
So relief of 100% of it.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I don't, I agree.
So it was yes, meaning that the variance would not substantiate derogate, you wrote it would not. You're saying it would? You're saying it would not? I'm saying it would, she says it would. So it's three to two, saying that it would derogate. Last one, the property's soil condition, shape, or topography are such that a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause substantial hardship.
This is a.
I don't know, and I've always felt that floodplain, et cetera, is not soil, you know, reliant. I'm of the opinion, you're an engineer, I'm not, that it doesn't have to be soil-oriented to be in the position that it's in today. It's not based on soil. Or based on.
Read it again?
Okay.
I was going to say, we're not, and I agree with you, we're claiming topography, not soil.
The property's soil conditions, shape, or topography are such that a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause substantial hardship. So are you saying that topography is what in order to?
Sure, absolutely, it's 100%. The topography refers to the slope and the elevation of the ground. Because the ground is not at an elevation above the flood zone, the topography is the constraint, that's.
And what is the maximum slope in the property percentage?
There's no slope criteria, it's either you're of it, above it, or not.
It's relatively flat. So due to its proximity to groundwater or sea, sea level or whatever it is, that, that's what is putting you into a variance situation, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I would disagree with that, because we're able to, all of our systems have the required separation from groundwater. The septic system has five feet.
So you're saying that it is?
The height of the ground, the height of the existing ground is what's, is what the hardship is. Because if that ground was at a higher elevation, it would be outside of the flood zone, and we wouldn't even be here.
Yes, Sharon.
How is it different from the other lots in the neighborhood?
I don't, I don't have all the others, I mean, the elevations are different. The other lots potentially have some land that is above the flood zone, we do not.
There are many in that area.
I would say the majority of the homes are in the flood zone.
I guess, all I'm saying is that, in my opinion, this is a matter of definition. Topography is elevation, by definition.
In your situation, it's because you don't have anything constructed on it, so you don't have any pre-existing non-conformities going on. And that's what's one of the things that's creating a problem for you, that I can see. Because someone else come in front of, came in front of this board, I'm not saying we'd approve or deny, but there's dealing with, in all cases, 99% of the case, pre-existing non-conformities.
Right.
And you don't have that. That's the problem that I see. And so, do we create a new home that is in that scenario? I don't know, but why don't, so I've got to continue with this process. So again, let's say it one more time. Property, soil condition, shape, or topography are such that a literal enforcement of the ordinance, ordinance would cause substantial hardship.
You're saying soil being in a wetland is not considered?
No, but he's not saying soil, he's saying the
Topography.
Topography of the lot. The fact that it's not here, but it's here, creates a scenario that it's in the floodplain. If it were here, it wouldn't be in the floodplain, he wouldn't be here. But it is here.
It's not unique for the neighborhood.
Right.
I've never, I've never heard that, as long as I've been on this board, which has been a while now, I've never heard that argument.
It is a different argument.
I've never heard it either.
In a flood zone. I've, I've just never heard that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I've just never heard that.
Well, you got to make a decision, though.
Well, wait a minute. Owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. So the key here is that affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. But so, but not affecting, in other words, it's unique. In other words, this lot is unique from every other lot in the neighborhood.
It's not.
You're claiming topography, not that it's falling off a cliff, that it's at sea level, so to speak. I'm saying there's many in that area like that.
I don't know that, do you know that? I, I don't know that. I, I guess I wasn't aware, or I guess I don't necessarily, I'm not convinced that, that we have to apply that standard to all the other lots. I mean, it's, it's this lot, this is the only subject lot.
But if you take like the marina, I would think that the marina is, the marina, all the marinas in a flood zone, I would think. The house that's at the marina is in a flood zone. And that's right behind this lot.
I just, I guess I don't understand how it seems like people are applying it to this uniqueness relative to the, to the neighborhood. Where does that language come from?
The state, it's the state law.
We do have some language that does say that in our book, it does say that. But, alright, so what do you think?
I, I can't.
I don't think it's unique.
I, I can't say it's unique, because it's in the flood zone, it's below elevation 11. Because we deal with that all the time, we've now, I've never heard that argument, but it's always been a reasonable place. Existing condition, you know, existing non-conforming. This is unique because it's.
Isn't this a state?
It's an empty.
It's state law, isn't it?
So I don't know.
This is state law.
No, sir, this could be, this could be built, this is a flood zone, this is a FEMA compliant structure.
Right, but, but.
It's elevated above the flood zone, this could be built in another town, 100%.
Most, if not all, the people come in front of this board, come with a building in the flood zone already. And so they've got a pre-existing non-conforming scenario. You don't have that.
I understand, sir, I was just, I was just responding to his comment, that you couldn't do it in the state, and that's not correct.
Oh, no, no, I concur, that's not correct. There are many communities you could not do it in.
Okay, then it's this town? Do you agree with that?
No, well, certainly this town and others, I can tell you there are many towns that I go to that I would not be able to do the same application. There are some that I probably could. It's just, it's town by town, depending upon their bylaw, depending upon a lot of things. But the issuance of a variance, the guidance for issuance of a variance is a state guidance, it isn't a town guidance. What we're going through right now is a state-mandated procedure, it is not a town-mandated procedure. Alright, so I'm just, you agree with that?
In the state overrules the town.
Well, yeah, no, the town is not saying what the criteria for a variance to be heard is, it, the state is saying it. So when I read these four things, that's the state.
I'm just asking the question, if the town has criteria for a variance, does the state overrule those?
I couldn't tell you, but the town does not have criteria for variance. The state has it. No, the town of Mashpee does not have criteria for it.
It's only bylaw.
It says that you must obtain a variance, it doesn't say how to obtain that variance. You then flip over to the state bylaw, the state regulations, and that's how you obtain the variance. Yeah, we have no criteria for.
To your point, though, the, the state, the state law does not require a financial hardship either.
It requires a hardship.
A hardship. Financial or otherwise.
Exactly, I got you. So what we're saying, when we went to the hardship, we did not feel, you heard the vote, that there was a hardship.
Oh, I thought you were saying that there wasn't, that there was.
No, I read, so I'll read it to you again. The property owner will experience substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And, and the members said, some said yes, but a majority said no. So, financial or otherwise.
So, Ron, here's Section 10 on variance.
Yeah, I've got it, yep.
So, if you would.
So, Section 10, reading right out of Mass. State Law, right? I'll read it, I presume you want me to. A variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw, where such permit-granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. That's right on Mass. Law.
Type that right into here.
So that's why he's taking the stance he's taking. There you go. So we've got a problem.
Want a copy?
That problem is as follows. I see, so, alright, so, again, we have to take a vote on that. Fourth thing, which is, I'm going to read it one more time, we need a vote. Property's soil condition, shape, or topography are such that a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause substantial hardship. Scott?
Will we vote on that?
Did we already vote on that one? Okay, alright.
Oh, we didn't vote on this one?
I didn't think we voted on this one. We didn't vote on that one. We did not. So my point is, is.
I thought you were going to read through all of them again.
So, no, you're saying no.
From what I'm hearing.
No. You're saying, what are you saying? You got two votes, no.
Yes.
You're saying yes, it does meet that criteria.
Yes.
Okay, I'm saying it doesn't.
Is this financial or topography?
Alright, I'll read. All right, I'll read it again, ladies and gentlemen, we'll do it again.
Topography.
The properties, this is exactly what we gotta find. Property soil conditions, shape or topography, and pick anyone, I don't care, and it's not specific, as such that a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause substantial hardship. Scott.
Jonathan.
No.
Yeah, Billy. Me, no.
No.
That's four to one, no. So at this point in time, Counselor, we can't hear your variance. Would you like to...
It doesn't look very good, does it?
Well, no, you've got, so the point is, and you were taking, I presume, at this point, we have, I think, three areas that do not meet the criteria. So that's a problem.
The only, the only problem that I see is that we really shouldn't be here. That's, that's, that's the problem that I see.
That's, that's between you and, and the zoning enforcement officer of this town. Because he has reprimanded it to us, and we just, we need to hear it. We, we don't make decisions based on whether you need to be here or not. We make decisions on whether we're gonna approve or disapprove. He makes those decisions whether you come here or not.
And I'm gonna try...
He made the decision you had to come here.
I read this on a similar lot by Attorney Corrine, and I wasn't 100% convinced. We gave me all this case.
That's not my, that's not our argument.
Yeah, it's a different issue.
I would make a recommendation, just one member, that you continue and speak with the zoning enforcement officer if you really believe that this doesn't belong in front of him.
There might be some information that he wasn't aware of, didn't have, that in fact, he may change his mind. I don't know.
Yeah. I, I was inclined to suggest that, Mr. Blaisdell, and I, I think we'd like that opportunity.
And when would you like to extend till, sir?
What do we have for time?
Well, why don't I put it, sorry, let's put it differently. Mary Ann, when can you extend till? April 23rd work for you?
It works for me. I don't know if that's gonna be, will that be enough time for us, David, or?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Today wasn't.
So April 23rd, Mary Ann again? All right. So are you asking for a continuance of your request for a variance, reference this lot until April 23rd, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have a motion to accept his request.
I will do that. The petition, you're seeking to extend the time for this hearing to April 23rd for further discussion. May I just, just add one thing? Should we, as a board, indicate the approvals that are already obtained, even though it has nothing to do with the issue of variance?
What approvals of the...
The approval of the Conservation Commission, the approval of...
No, I, I don't think we should get into that at this point.
That's fine. No, I'm just asking the question.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because we're, we're not closing a public hearing. We're not, we're not closing comments. We're not closing anything. We're just extending. Those are all, if in fact he goes forward and we can get by those four issues, we will then get into that.
I'm good.
So you're gonna make a motion?
The motion has been made. It's on the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor. Hopefully you can work things out.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Attorney, Attorney Mills, Mary Ann, you need to sign something.
She has, she has a document you need to sign for that extension. No, we'd rather wait. That's okay. It'll only take her a second. We like to do things methodically.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah?
Three more.
More stuff. Just killed two trees.
26th.
Do you want some water?
I would love to have some water. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. Here we go. So Billy just walked out before signing.
I'm gonna leave a spot for him.
Yes.
Three, two, two.
I already took my sweater off. There's not much left. You know what I'm saying?
Maybe Sharon?
As soon as Billy come... Just put it the other way, and it'll be open the width of the box. Wait, we have five signatures. We don't need, what's going on?
That's gonna create...
One of the signatures is, um...
It's Rob, Rob Mills.
Okay, I got you. I'm sitting there going, six? Great job. When Billy comes in, can you hand him, have him sign that, please? All right. Can't start without Billy.
Take a short break. Here he comes, Bill.
You getting one for everybody?
Thank you, sir. You sure? All right, you wanna sign this, please?
Yes, I will.
Right on that line.
You got it, buddy.
Thank you, sir. May I have my pen back?
Absolutely.
You're the best.
But it was my pen.
I have no idea. All right. Moving on.
Is this in the pen?
That's not mine. George, would you like to read 27 Keel Way into the record, please?
Keel Way. Miller, Miller's Pool Incorporated requests a written finding under section 174-17 and section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws and MGL chapter 131, section 40. Proposed construction of a spa shall be setback at least 50 feet from the water or wetland on property located in an R3, R-3 zoning district and Little Neck Bay cluster subdivision. F120, parcel 135, Mashpee, Mass. Owners of record, Robert A. Sherman and Kim S. Sawyer.
So if you'd like to submit, just give us your name and credentials and your involvement, please.
Okay, so my name is Chris Miller. I'm, I'm representing the pool companies, the, and the owners.
Are you an engineer, an attorney?
He's an engineer.
I prepared the site plan for Miller Pros.
I see.
And we're just doing the work. We're doing the, the spot. Yeah, so I think you guys have the site plans, right? So I'm assuming everybody has the site plan.
We do have the site plans.
It's just a concrete, like a nice spot, seven by seven. It's gonna be in the back of the house. There is, there is existing patio there already. Basically, we're just digging what the patio is and just put the spot, you know, right near the back deck. The reason here is because the, the subback is 50 feet, and I think we're 47, right?
Forty-six point one.
Forty-six.
Forty-six point one.
Yeah.
Would this, this would entail lot coverage, right? We'd have to think about lot coverage on this?
Yeah, there's no lot coverage on this.
Do you have anything with lot coverage?
Yes. The lot coverage, it's zoned R3, 40,000 square feet. The lot itself is 21,360 square feet. Lot coverage, existing lot coverage was, is...
Is it anywhere on the plan, sir?
The lot coverage is 20.7, and the proposed will bring it up to 21.
Is that anywhere located on, on a plan or anything? Do we have that in writing?
You should have it.
This is Little Neck Bay, so it's 30%, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
It should be noted on the plan.
Do you have it?
Yeah, it's in writing. It's right here. It's in Little Neck Bay?
Yeah.
This is what he's got.
That's, that shouldn't be...
It's on his application, the lot coverage. Do you wanna just take a look at that?
Yeah, but it should be on there.
He's got, he's got one that has it. We, our copy doesn't have to do...
So do you have a plan that it's, that the lot coverage, et cetera, is on the plan? Or did you just have it?
We don't have it.
We don't have that.
You don't have it?
No.
No.
We have it when we're here.
So we need to have that for the record, number one, and we need to look at it also.
Can I bring this to you, guys?
Sure.
We're gonna need to stamp that in file.
No, no.
No, no, no.
So you did not give any of these to Mary Ann?
We, we, we thought we did, but if we don't have it, we can provide it.
Oh, you've got one.
I haven't.
He's got it.
We do have it.
We do have it.
All right.
I do have an addendum plan that was done. I don't know if you ever received that.
How many of them are?
There you go. We have.
Have they got pass? No, we got it.
All right. So let's take a look at the plan, make sure everything's all right. It seems to me it's pretty straightforward.
Just, just for the, for information for the board to know, the, this house, we had a pool there before. The previous owner removed the pool. It was on the other side of the house, but there was a large pool that was in the backyard, and that was removed before the house was purchased several years ago.
So you're putting in the proposed spa, which is seven by seven?
Correct.
That's your only change to your existing situation, correct?
Yes.
Period. And that is going to be, and...
Going from and to...
Yeah, it's going from what setback to what setback?
It's going from 51, setback to, existing is 51.6, and it's going to 46.1.
What's the required setback, David, there?
50 from the wetlands.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the wetlands or to the actual property line?
No, to the wetlands.
To the wetlands. It's to the wetlands. The proposed is 46.1. But can I say one thing? There was hardscape, existing hardscape there that was also non-performing that did not pass today.
So, so, so go, what is your closest point of a structure to the wetlands that exists this instant? That exists today?
On the spa itself?
No, no. I'm gonna say it again. The closest point to the wetlands of any structure.
41. Because the step isn't, the rear deck...
Closest point to the wetlands is...
41.
46. That will, oh. No, current, that's proposed. For the existing.
41.
41.
The pool's 46?
That's to the coastal bank, top of the bank.
So I said wetlands. The definition of wetlands, coastal bank.
The proposed is 46.
I'm getting one measurement from the spa to the marsh, then I have another measurement to the top of the bank.
So he, so he's the engineer. I'm trying to get the information from the engineer.
So what I'm getting here is...
All right, stop, stop, stop. Trying to get the information from the engineer. Tell me, I'm gonna ask a question. The closest point of any existing structure out there today to anything that it would be considered a wetlands, which is floodplain, which coastal bank, you name it.
Land subject to coastal flowage.
41.1.
Of the actual house.
Of the actual, of any structure. You're not saying that's the house. And your, and your spa is gonna be what?
The spa will be...
46.
Why is he here?
Well, from the salt marsh, it'll be 46.
I gotta show you something, Ron. We gotta, we gotta discrepancy.
I know we do.
The 41 from the existing deck is to the salt marsh. The, the measurement they're giving us for the proposed spa is to the salt marsh, not the top of the bank. It's a different measurement altogether.
But that's why I'm using the language with the engineer. I'm using what I believe to be the correct language. I'll say it again. As we said here tonight, what is your closest point of any structure on the lot, to any wetlands considered defined as a wetlands under Mass. State law, 135, section, I think, 40? What's your closest point?
Top of, top of bank, closest is 41.1.
Now I'm gonna ask you the second question. What is the closest point where your new proposed spa is gonna go to on that same wetland basis?
You don't have it on there. I don't have the exact measurement on there.
That's kind of important.
My map says land subject to coastal flowage. It's not marked. The whole thing in the flood zone. The whole thing's in a flood zone.
So the answer to my question is, they're all in the middle of a flood zone, because a flood zone is, is considered a wetlands and under Mass. State law.
It's, it's considered, that whole area.
So all this property is at zero setback to a wetland. There's the answer. All right, good. All right, I got you. So that being the statement, if they're all zero setback to the wetlands, he's not getting any closer to the wetland.
Correct.
So 100% of the lot is within coastal storm flowage? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I don't really know where the line, it's not determined on this. I don't know if it's determined on the other.
David, unfortunately, there's two plans. The both plans are different measurements.
Yeah.
It's very confusing.
Well, if it's all under, if it's subject, land subject to coastal flowage, it's already in the wetland.
The whole thing is under the wetland, which means the spa is zero setback to wetland. The house is zero setback to wetland.
So the board generally goes to the, the increase in lot coverage, if there is some, to the old way we did it, and assume that it's a...
We're trying to determine how close the spa is to the wetland compared to the next.
Zero feet. It's in the wetland.
It's in the wetland.
The spa is in the wetlands, the house is in the wetlands. Right. It's all in the wetland. That being said...
So he's increasing coverage in the wetlands.
Right. So that being said, the question of the day is, is really lot coverage then, right? On the old way and the new way?
Correct.
So here's a question. If you take the square footage of your lot, and you take the house footprint out and the spa footprint out, no, just the house footprint out, what's your lot coverage? Are you saying, you've got the calculation on here. I just wanna make sure it's correct. So you've got existing lot coverage at 14.2%. How did you come up with that?
Existing lot coverage. Lot coverage is 20.7. The existing lot coverage you're reading is for, is for parking, 14.2.
Well, parking isn't part of, correct me if I'm wrong, David, parking is not lot coverage.
No.
We generally don't.
No.
No. It's gotta be a structure. Existing lot coverage by structures is 20.7.
So by structure, 20.7. So what is that 20.7, where does that go to when you add in your spa?
It goes up to 21%.
21%, which is still under, is it 25 in this zone?
I believe it's 30.
30, 30 and 110.
R3 I have is 20. Not that, not that it's a problem, really, but...
Little Neck is, I believe it's a coastal.
Here's our, here's, I think, where we should go. I don't have a problem with what you wanna do. Does the rest of the board make, does that make sense?
Depending on what I've heard, but these plans are all...
Well, we need to correct the plans. I'll tell you what we need to do, and please chime in if I'm saying something incorrect. We need to have the following language. Existing structure coverage, I don't need to know about driveways or, or, or any of that stuff. Existing structure coverage is, proposed structure coverage, which would include the spa, is, and then, okay, if you wanna add setbacks, I guess, it doesn't really matter about setbacks, because it's all in the flood zone. So you don't need to, you don't need to, we don't even need to talk about the setback from coastal banks or anything else, because you're in the middle of a, of a floodplain.
One thing that should be on that plan is that it's 100%
Right.
Because of...
You should state...
Land subject to coastal storm flowage.
Then you should do a different lot coverage. It should then say, so you just did structure coverage, right, before spa and after spa. And that's the language we want. Structure coverage, that's the house, et cetera, before the spa, and then another structure coverage, which you said was 21 point something, after the spa. Then you're gonna give us two other lines. You're gonna give us, no, it's actually one other line.
One, 100%.
Yeah. You're gonna say that 100% of this lot is in the flood zone. And that tells us that lot coverage is technically 100%.
Correct.
Somewhere in this plan, you gotta say that a hundred percent of this lot, if it is, is in the floodplain. Then this board can make an informed decision. It sounds like you'll be fine.
Okay.
And you're probably gonna have questions, so if you call and say, I can't quite remember.
I'll talk.
They'll tell you everything you need on that plan.
He can clarify what I just said. Because I may not have made it clear enough for you. I'll be the first to admit, maybe I wasn't clear. So, does that make sense, sir?
Yes.
Fine. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, is ask you, well, it's up to you. I don't think you wanna be heard tonight, because if you were, you may not get what you want. If you satisfy this board with these, with these amendments, you probably may get what you want. Sounds like you will. Yes, sir?
Is that possible for you guys to vote on, with the condition?
No, this is too far, this is too far away from that. If there were a couple little things missing, you're too far away from that. So, when's the next meeting?
Twenty-third.
Yeah, but you, you don't overburden yourself.
Well, this should be pretty.
Yeah, this should be pretty straightforward. April twenty-third. Would you like to extend this decision, and, well, ask for an extension until April twenty-third?
Yes, please.
Okay. Could I get a motion, please?
A motion to extend the hearing on twenty-seven Kielway to April twenty-third of our submission of additional information. I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, don't leave yet. You need to sign a piece of paper. Do you wanna prepare that piece, that paper now, Mary Ann, or wait? Yeah, you need to sign a document. Don't leave, please. Sir, could you find, could you sign that for her? Thank you.
Okay.
Well, you know, what I, what I did recently was, well, I have trusts, right? All that's in order, will's in order.
Okay, I'll see if I can.
Talk about saving a lot.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Here we go.
I'll be, I'll be.
You'll be ready not having to worry about the ring of the.
Not having her to worry about it, or them to worry about it.
I don't know any of this.
Here we go. After the races. George, I didn't get use out of you very much tonight. I'll make up for it. That's okay. Okay. Seems though it's coming down. George, would you like to read Seven Pine Avenue to the record, please?
Sir, Seven Pine Avenue. Owners, David Baskin and Eleanor Gorman, trustees of twenty-three sixty-five Fells Pond Road Realty Trust. We trust a special permit under section one seventy-four dash seventeen point one for zoning bylaws to raise and replace existing single-family dwelling, the new single-family dwelling on property located in R-3 zoning district. Map one twenty-three, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you. Sir, if you could give us your name and your involvement in the project, please?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Mike Levinson. I'm the lawyer for the applicant, the Two Sixty-five Fells Pond Road Realty Trust. Mark Dibb is the engineer on the matter. He's also here with me tonight. Before we begin, I did wanna raise one thing with the board. The plan that was submitted with the special permit application, there's been a de minimis change to that plan. It was sent over earlier today electronically. We also have hard copies to it as well. The plan does not affect the zoning determination. It actually is based on an abutter, who, when notice was provided to the abutter, he raised some concerns regarding the water containment, and there has been a de minimis change made to the plan based on the abutter's concerns. To be blunt, to have my client be a good neighbor, he wants to make sure that the neighbors are not upset with the design. I have Mr. Baskin here, if you'd like to hear from the discussions and what transpired.
So, we need to figure out how we're gonna manage that. I'll tell you why. We use, we have a cutoff date of applicants' reply, et cetera, of noon time to Friday before. I understand you have a situation in that, and abutter raised an issue, and you're trying to defend that issue. I get it. The board needs to make a decision on how you wanna manage that as a board, because I don't think it's fair to say to an applicant, noon time, Friday, then all of a sudden he gets input from an abutter, and he can't, he can't deal with that, because he's been cut off.
Go ahead. And as I said, the, the minimis plan that we have submitted to you electronically today, and we have hard copies, actually addresses the abutter's concern. And I said, I don't believe it actually affects the determination for the special permit. There is a change on the plan that we submitted with the special, the special permit application to what is before you now, which we submitted. So, that's the issue, yeah.
Is this plan current?
So, yeah.
Again, Mark Dibb with Cape Pen Islands Engineering. That, unless she printed new ones today, that's probably not current. There is a three twenty-five, twenty-five revision date.
Three twenty.
If it would help the board, I could.
No?
If it would help the board, I could describe the engineering details behind the.
Here's my concern, right?
Do you have any, anything printed, the new one?
We have new ones through the street.
No, 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 but don't, don't share with us yet. Don't, please. You're gonna really mix this up. So, how are we gonna manage it? And I'll tell you why. I usually review plans before I come, because managing as chair, I can't look at very many plans. And frankly, I can't look at it right now, because I'm still running a meeting. So, it's a problem.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, again, this is a de minimis change that's not gonna be dealing with any additional, either added or subtracted setbacks or lot coverage.
Here's the issue. An applicant, I mean, an abutter, maybe the audience is gonna raise an issue, and you're gonna say, I dealt with that and the change in that plan, which is not part of the record, because I can't make it part of the record. How you gonna deal with that?
Mr. Chairman, if we could, could we at least go through a presentation and at least get some guidance about, you know?
I would have, as a chair, have no problem with giving the presentation, understanding at the end of the presentation, you're probably gonna be asked for an extension. Because I can't bring that plan into the record.
I, as one member, think that you can make the presentation, but I think you're wasting your time, because you're gonna have to remake the presentation with new plans that have already been distributed to the public.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend it. I'll tell you why. Exactly what Billy said, you're gonna go through the whole thing again. See, it's, it's a quirk in that we have to have a cutoff. She can't, she can't go up to the day of a meeting, because I look at plans. We look at plans. We gotta have that weekend, that Monday, that Tuesday. So, I'm not gonna defend it, but the bottom line is, is I get it. Someone gave some comments. You're trying to, I get the whole process. There's a little crack there.
It's a timing issue.
We also sign these plans into record.
Yeah.
Right. Ron, can I interrupt?
They get recorded.
Looking at the material that we get, the response from the Board of Health after they reviewed the material indicates that the Board of Health does not approve.
It's the septic issue.
Well, why don't we look, hey, you know what, Charlie? Good point.
Yep.
What we might be able to do for you, which I think it sounds like we can, is we'll go through the record and see if there's some holes that you should fill to be productive for your next meeting. How's that?
I think it's good, because I found it.
Read this into the record, but not have them make presentations.
Yeah, so there, you don't even have to, so, so do we have comments from the Board of Health?
Yeah. Board of Health relative to Seven Pine Avenue. Board of Health does not approve. Existing house is three-bedroom. Septic is designed for three bedrooms in houses in Zone Two. Floor plans show four bedrooms, one on the first floor and three on the second floor.
So, you realize that if that stands at the next meeting, you're gonna have an issue.
You're gonna have a big problem.
So, you need to correct the Board of Health.
Scott's got an issue.
Mark, do you have somewhere on your new plan that we haven't seen yet, saying what the average grade is and what the ridge height is to the thirty-five, is it thirty feet where you are? Is it thirty-five?
Is that in the Papaneset overlay district?
It's not.
That section?
Because we don't have anything saying, showing the line of where the maximum height is and where the ridge is in relation. Usually we have that on there.
Do we know if it's in Papaneset?
So, that it's thirty-five, right?
I see maximum building height at fifty-three. That's the elevation in fifty-three.
We need a name.
They do have the original bridge.
Yeah, if you're gonna speak, you need to give your name and your involvement in the project, please.
It might be here, Mr.?
I'm Dorive Nikolov, architect. This is Alex, who's also working on the project. And it is on the drawing, the height of the building.
The maximum building height, that is the height?
We're under the maximum building height.
Because it says maximum building. Usually they'll note what the maximum height is in the show, below here. It just says maximum building height.
Hi, yeah. My name's Alex Higgins. The, the maximum building height above average grade would be at fifty-three point eight oh. We're at fifty-three point three oh, approximately six inches below the maximum building height.
Fifty-three?
Okay. That's the confusing part. What they're saying is the actual elevation height. Usually we see on the plan, so people see it, they'll have a line saying that the maximum building height is elevation thirty-five from average grade, and it'll be noted there. It's not, it's noted, but it's not, it's noted a different way, so it's a little confusing. I get it. I don't know if anyone else would have.
I don't. But, but, correct me if I'm wrong, as long as he gets it at the application of building.
He did it, but I disagree that this doesn't exceed the maximum building height, because you've got a hundred-foot square foot cupola you're calling, and that, that's a structure.
The cupola is shown above here.
No, cupola is not included in building height by the code. What you're allowed to have is a hundred-foot traditional widow's walk, not a hundred-foot cupola. That, that's a structure.
Let's stop, stop, stop. I would recommend, because we're gonna extend this, that you write with him.
Absolutely.
Sounds to me like there's an issue with these plans. Because you, because when the motion's made, it's gonna say something to the effect, any change to these plans, you're gonna come back here. And you don't wanna have to come back here. And my point is, is you wanna make sure he's all set with these plans, and that Scott's all set with his height. And you've got a Board of Health issue.
Yep.
What other issues do we have? Letters?
We have.
Anything with conservation?
Letter from an abutter.
Conservation?
We have a letter from an abutter. I'd like to read it, please.
Letter from the abutter is from Peter Riedel, dated three twenty, twenty twenty-five. And it's to Mary Ann Romero. Thank you very much for showing me the initial submitted plans for the application to raise and rebuild the residence of Seven Pine Avenue, Mashpee. I have a series of questions that I would like to read into the record and made available to all participants at the March twenty-six Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. First, is it, is really a procedural question, how long before the actual meeting was the plans that the ZBA will be considering be submitted to allow the public sufficient time to view and present comment in person or by electronic methods? I ask, as you had told me, that what I viewed on March twenty probably would be revised prior to March twenty-sixth. Plans might eliminate or create new questions or comments. Second is a question concerning the. I think the plans I saw had a bedroom on the basement level, master bedroom on first floor, and two additional bedrooms on the second floor. It is my impression that the building being raised only had three bedrooms. I might be mistaken on that issue. Third, comment has to do with location of proposed building on the lot in regard to setback requirements and the location of the septic system. The current long-term wastewater project from Mashpee does not show this area as ever being connected to any treatment facility as the subsurface drainage is into Nantucket Sound. It is therefore suggested that the raise and rebuild permit, if granted, have a requirement that the septic system for Seven Pine Avenue be upgraded to the most effective system available today to replace the current Title V septic tank. Thank you for considering my comments. Please respond by email to my initial comment, rate timing of revised plans. Peter Riedel, twenty-two Pine Avenue, Mashpee.
Do we have any other letters?
What was the date that you had on that?
The date of that letter was March twenty, two thousand twenty-five.
I, I have a letter here for three twenty-five from the same Peter Riedel.
Yeah, which is after that letter.
Excuse me?
Which is after that letter.
Yes.
Well, then, we need to read it.
Okay. This is from Peter Riedel, dated three twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. Would you please forward these comments to all parties concerned with Seven Pine Avenue, Mashpee, O-two-six, four-nine? It is my understanding that petitioners are proposing an impervious driveway. Insofar as there is a flooding problem at the intersection of Pine Avenue and Shore Drive, just less than one hundred feet from their proposed driveway, I request, A, board investigate the possibility of pedioles, I don't know that word, agreeing it having driveway pervious to absorb rainwater or any other runoff, or B, should portioned insist on having an impervious driveway, that the driveway be shaped such as to have all rainwater or other runoff directed to a dry well located under or immediately adjacent to the impervious driveway. Also, board should consider, should be sure that the height of the proposed building does not exceed the thirty-five-foot maximum height measured from the existing topography, not one that is altered by increasing the height of the currently existing land. As also previously stated, I request that the board require the petitioner to install the newest, most effective nitrogen removal wastewater system treatment commercially available today. This is known, I think, as the A-one treatment system. An additional question, do any of the revisions submitted on Friday last have any changes that might affect the comments or review by the Health Department or the Conservation Committee Commission? And if so, should not this be, petition be tabled so that the revised plans can be reviewed by either department? Thank you for your consideration.
Alright, so just to answer some of those concerns, the fact of what you put in for leaching fields between you and the Board of Health, not this board. But, I can tell you, water must stay on this site up to at least a twenty-five-year storm. I'd like to see it even crease above that. But, the question will be asked, and you know, Mark, we'll, we'll ask that question, is the water staying on this lot? So, that, his question will be answered by, by you, right? By saying, yeah, it's staying on this lot up to a, a storm event of X, right?
That includes the driveway.
Oh, yeah, includes everything in the lot. So, his questions will be answered indirectly, but certainly not, not septic system questions. That's not our lane. But, that being said, it seemed to me, if we took plans or amendment to plans into record right now, you can see some issues right there, right? So, I think it's very important that you do what you need to do, meet with whoever you need to meet with to get, to get ready, meet with the Board of Health, get that straightened out, get your plans all in, in advance, and at that point, come back to this board. Somebody in the audience wants to speak. If, if you wanna say something, just understand they're coming back and doing the whole presentation over.
You have to come to the mic.
Come on up, give your name. But, just understand, like I just said, they're gonna do this whole presentation over.
Name and address.
Yes, my name is Henry.
In the mic, please.
You can take the microphone right out. Thank you. Slide it up.
Oh, thanks. My name is Henry Sock Beeson. My wife is here as well, Deirdre Sock Beeson, and we are abutters. We are on two ninety-four Shore Drive, so that would put us, I guess, to the west of the property. And we have a number of concerns. We object to any revisions to the plans, because we haven't, we haven't seen them. We stopped in earlier in the week. Very gracious.
Are you the person who wrote one of the letters and asking when plans had to be completed by?
No, that was Pete Riedel.
Okay, well, just to answer that question, all plans have to be submitted the Friday before, so it would have been last Friday by noon time.
Right.
So, if you stop by the, 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 the office of Zoning Board of Appeals at one o'clock on Friday, the meeting, you know, before the meeting day.
Right.
You will get all plans and everything, because we don't accept plans or any input after that.
Right, and we were, we stopped by, I think it was Monday or.
There you go. So, you get all the plans. That's why we did not take new plans into the record.
Right, but we have some additional observation and requests. First, we, we agree about, with Pete, about the, the hard driveway, and we would also point out that the rear area has also been. First, we, um, we agree about, with, with Pete about the, the hard driveway, and we would also point out that, um, the rear, um, area has also been hardscaped, so there's an issue there, I don't know.
So the engineer, I presume, and we, this engineer's been in front of this board several times, he understands that all impervious services have to be taken into account when it comes to putting it back and controlling it prior to allowing it leaving the site.
Right, and we do have, we do have an issue at the corner of Pine and Shore Drive, um, sometimes when it's a hard rain, um, the water is knee-high.
I've seen it.
Yeah.
So we don't make applicants make something, um, let's put it this way, better, but it cannot make it worse.
That's my.
So they're not gonna alleviate that problem per se.
No, no, I didn't expect that.
But it better not get any worse.
Right, and that's what I've come to, uh, bring to the attention of the board and request that, uh, do consideration be.
That, that is a state law, sir.
Okay, well, I'm Connecticut attorney, so.
Yeah, no, that is a state law, the state of Massachusetts, that's a no-no.
Okay.
And it will be part of the, uh, it will be part of this, uh, of this decision.
So, I, I think it's a relatively simple fix, I mean, the, um, if you put in shells and permeable materials, then it tends to sink in more.
Well, it's been historically not this board's decision to make someone take care of possibly everybody's problem and lay it onto one person.
I understand.
But this board will look at it, make sure that this problem isn't made worse.
Okay. The, uh, the other question that we had was the, the grade, um, what is, what, I, I can't read the, um, the plans to determine what the level of the grade is going to be, are they gonna add material to the property, are they gonna take?
Finish grade or the average grade that it is now?
Finish grade, where it is now, I want, I, I'm concerned that they're gonna.
The average grade will be noted on the plan what the average grade is.
Actual and proposed.
Before they tear the house down, I'm sure Mark has it noted what the average grade is, then the house has to fit within that height of that.
Mark, have you got, and I should know this, the board of health plan's not done yet, correct? I mean, I didn't even look at the file, I mean, where are you at with the board of health plan?
This plan has all the details for the board of health.
Okay, good, all right, so better way to, I, better question is, do you have grades in this plan? Remember, I'm running.
Correct, yes.
So if you look at the plan that's, that's right on the table today, and will be on the table again the Friday before the meeting, it has existing and proposed grades. So you can look at that plan, and you can look at existing and proposed grades, and you'll know whether there's fill or not, um, if you can't look at that, if I'm around, more than happy to come in and point it out to you, um, I don't know how else to do it other than to look at the plan yourself, and you'll be able to determine fill or cut.
Okay, when they, when they do the excavation for the basement, do they take that material away, or?
Depends on whether they need it on-site.
In this case, some will be exported, definitely.
But not all?
Yeah, so there's a negative, so.
A lot of times these lots are so small, it's hard to keep it on-site, you have to haul it away.
And then bring back what you need.
Bring back what you need, usually clean fill, you would hope.
Okay, um.
Remember, sir, this is, all these questions you could ask at the next meeting.
Because we'll be having a full.
Well, I live in Connecticut, so we just happened to be here this week, so that's why I came tonight.
You're here now, then, we're more than happy to listen to you.
All right, um, when the building is under construction, um, does the board require some sort of, um, barrier to prevent the disturbed soil for draining?
That's not.
Well, no, 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 well, wait, wait, so you're saying disturbed soil that may go onto someone else's land if in fact it rains or pours?
Well, my main concern is going into the road, because winds up.
Yeah, so that would be conservation, or I would presume that's under erosion control, and believe it or not, under the state code, there is an erosion control code, and so you cannot allow water from your site going onto another site with silt and fines in it, it's illegal. Correct, Mr. Dibs?
Correct, yes, the contractor should make appropriate measures, not to mess in the erosion.
Waddle's. So that's illegal, but we don't control that, that would be controlled, and I don't wanna.
There's an order of conditions that conservation's probably already required.
And that's enforceable by me. That's enforceable by me.
Okay, all right, so if there's an issue, I just bring it up to you.
Absolutely.
There you go, he's got nothing else to do. He's so busy lately.
The other, um, point we wanted to bring up, and we brought this up at the last board meeting when a different plan was being approved for this same property, um, was the issue of, um, the air conditioner, which is on our side of the, of the building. And we requested that there be some sort of a, a barrier erected.
Creating.
Yes.
The board quite commonly requires that.
Okay, we would request that.
I'm not saying we would here, I'm just saying we have in the past.
All right, and I would make my request part of the record, that we would like.
I would recommend that you send a letter including that, so that it gets.
You can't be at the next meeting, you should put that in a letter.
Yes, put it in a letter, board will take it under advisement, we have done it in the past.
Very good, um, the, uh, the last thing was, do we have any notion of when the building would be built, is it gonna be done?
Firmly yet. They gotta get, they gotta get.
It's a long way around.
They gotta get through here first, but I mean.
They were hoping to start tomorrow.
Feast of meat.
Yeah.
Not tomorrow.
Well.
Not before April twenty-third.
A number of people in the community have raised the issue about noise of construction in the summertime.
Noise, did you say?
Noise, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, we don't deal with noise, it's not our zoning issue, uh, I don't know where you'd go with a noise complaint.
Limitations on when they can start work, when they finish work.
Yeah, I think there are limits in the town, for, for landscapers, there are for sure.
Your association might have a, you have to start, uh, Mash, Mash, Mashpee has its own hours you can work, you can work on Saturdays, but there's parts of New Seabury, part, certain areas, you can't work on Saturdays in the summer.
No, this isn't part of New Seabury at all, it's Rock Landing.
It's Rock Landing, so I don't know if your association has a no work on Saturdays from July to September, I don't know.
You'd have to ask your own association what the requirements are.
But Mashpee, Mashpee requirements, I think it's seven to seven, Dave, is that correct, seven to seven working time?
And no work on Sunday.
No work on Sunday, Saturdays, I think.
I think it's limited on Saturday.
The general hours are seven to five.
Seven to five, bro.
And, and six days a week.
I think the cops aren't coming.
Six days a week, no work on Saturday without a permit from.
Sunday.
From, you know, in the police.
That's not us.
All right, um, the rest of it is, is material that you would be far better.
I would recommend that you put all your concerns in a letter to this board.
That's not a problem, we're certainly good.
Very good.
We'd be more than happy to read it in the record and, uh, take it under advisement, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just have a question, I have a question for David, again.
Sure.
David, don't we have in the bylaws what the maximum size of a coupla can be, the area of a coupla, is there a?
Thought it was a hundred.
Square footage, you mentioned a hundred, it's, it's in the bylaw, isn't it?
A coupla?
I mean, yeah, a clear story.
A widow's walk.
Well, the widow's walk is a hundred square feet, but.
But coupla, I thought we had something about, it's been years, but we've had that issue in the past when a really oversized coupla came in, 'cause they were trying to make a third floor.
The problem with this is, that's a structural member above the, above the thirty-five feet.
But if it's clear story and there's no floor.
It's not a coupla that you put on it, this is built, this is built into, as a, over the mezzanine, yeah, and the roof is above.
No, actually, it's, it's a coupla built on.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Again.
They have to go to see him to deal with all those issues.
But it's on the plan, and he brought it up, so I wanna give Dorive a chance to correct something that has to be corrected when it comes back again, so it's not an issue next time.
Yeah.
They can deal directly with you.
It's very much like the project we're doing with Scott, which is, it, it's a structure that is sitting right on top, and I know we have, I've already spoken with you about the coupla at, um, the project we did there, which was ten by ten, and it sits right on top, so we've, we did it. I'm sorry?
This isn't part of us.
I know, but I don't want it to come back at the next meeting and on the plans, and then it's an issue again, and you're gonna say continue.
Scott.
No, but we said that they gotta sit down, make sure they're straight.
I'm just trying, that's what I'm trying to do, get them to communicate, so, so I'm done, okay.
Thank you, Scott.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to do, I just wanted to bring the. What?
All right.
We're running out of time.
Okay, I get it, all right, so, extension, you're gonna request an extension?
Yeah, um, request.
Oh, sorry, um, I wasn't gonna go too much, you know, because if you want to, feel free to do so, but understand, this is being aesthetic, so when we extend and you wanna talk, I may say, because you already spoke. So it may make better sense, if you can make the next meeting, I would recommend that, but if you can't, speak now. You have that right.
He's got three minutes.
Should tell him. Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Ten Dixon, Devon Howe, Ten Dixon Circle, Halston, Mass, um, representing, uh, my parents, um, Director Butters to the east at, uh, eleven Pine Ave. Wish to quickly speak tonight, understanding it's getting late, um, just to air our concerns, um, first, to give the applicant, um, time. We were actually the butters, uh, that spoke directly to, uh, Mr. Baskin, um, our notice came, uh, last Friday, um, must've got lost maybe in the mail, it just took a while to get to us, so unfortunately, we weren't, um, given that time to, you know, get the plans, review them, um, just have that meeting, um, and I think that's where that, that mishap was. However, um, like I said, we've already spoken to Mr. Baskin, uh, my father, Brian Howe, um, spoke with him, and our concerns were just germane to, um, what we perceive more as a civil matter, just how that stormwater, um, related to, um, my parents' property to the east along eleven Pine Ave. The revised plan, um, haven't seen the physical copy tonight, but I presume, based on the conversations we've had, it addressed all of our concerns, um, and we were and are in support of, uh, Mr. Baskin's project, um, and in granting of the special permit, understanding that the board's gonna be, um, continuing this, uh, application, we can certainly put that in writing for the record, um, for the board.
I would recommend to do that.
That letter of support.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Put that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, so, anyone else in the audience, I might as well ask. Okay, so, we're gonna extend these, the, uh, public hearing.
Yeah, request till the April meeting?
Uh, April twenty-third.
Nope.
No?
Nope. You're into May.
We're into May.
Oh, is, is it because of the number that are already on in April?
Slammed.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, we don't wanna be here in May till ten, eleven o'clock.
What's the date in May, Mary Ann?
Fourteenth, to the beginning of May.
What's the date, um?
May fourteenth.
We probably already have eight to ten things on in, in April, we're only volunteers.
I know. One day I might join.
You wanna do it?
Yeah.
April fourteenth work for you?
May.
Uh, May fourteen, sorry.
April fourteenth.
May fourteenth work for you?
If you can just put me on an alternate for April, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we'll do that, but at this point, we will, we will have a vote in reference to May fourteenth, right?
Yep.
So, um, Charlie, would you make a move?
At the request of the petitioner, the hearing, uh, is continued, uh, to the hearing in April as an alternate, and if not reached in that hearing, it will be heard on May fourteenth, at the hearing scheduled for that date.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
You got something to sign?
All righty.
Thank you.
One to go.
One more to go, still. You might get two.
This is a. You probably don't need to even go to sleep now, Ron, just kinda.
No, I'm getting up at two, what the heck, right?
What time you leaving?
Two AM.
Oh, my God.
When? In like six hours?
Yeah.
Where are you, where are you going?
Going to Logan with the crew, we gotta go pick up crew all over the place, and then we go to Logan, and then fly out of Logan.
What time's your flight?
I think it's six o'clock or seven o'clock in the morning. And I get there, and I gotta change all the oil and everything, and I'm leaving a crew. And tomorrow, when time we're leaving.
All righty then.
Exactly, for a one-hour tour.
Ron, by the way. Professor and Mary Ann? This has set a record, only one.
All right, Ron signed, I wanna get, I gotta get up at five and work.
Never been like this.
I don't have a plane to sleep in.
I won't be sleeping, fully agree.
Mary Ann.
Poor old boy. All right. Ron, we don't get paid enough.
That is true.
Wait a minute, we don't get paid at all, you know?
I was tired when I got here.
I didn't appreciate it before I came.
Mmm.
The older I get, the poorer I am.
I don't feel it.
No, no, I gotta.
Don't tell everybody how he felt about grabbing.
About what?
All right, Charlie, Charlie, go.
Oh, I didn't see that, I didn't see his comments.
There you go, George, would you read?
Twelve Bay Road, Honors Elizabeth Cowridge Benway and George Alfred Benway III, trustees of the E.C. Benway Trust, request a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction of, of the foundation walls to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in R-three zoning district, VAP one fourteen, partial thirty-four, Mashpee, Mass.
So, if you could tell us your involvement, your name, please?
Address.
Address and all those things.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is George Benway, I'm self-representing for the proposed work at Twelve Bay Road, I live at Twelve Bay Road, um, a bit of background about me, um, I grew up in the house next door, eleven Bay Road, I lived there my whole life, um, I was able to purchase this house with the help of my parents, um, and I intend to continue my life in Mashpee. And the house is an old beach house, like we've all seen in Mashpee, um, so it needs a lot of TLC, and this is kind of the first step in that process, is to put a good foundation under it. So just a few weeks ago, I received my negative determination on my RDA from conservation, and I'm here on behalf of the, uh, written finding for the proposed work. So a little bit about the property, um, it is existing non-conforming, uh, the front setback is roughly, or it is twenty-three point one feet, sides are four point eight and six feet respectively, and the back is twenty-three point seven seven feet. Currently, the house does not meet any setbacks except for the rear setback, um, and it, another thing to note is despite being close to the water, it is not in a flood zone, the, uh, surrounding elevation around the house is about thirteen feet. So the work proposed, um, so really, this is a foundation replacement, all in kind, um, generally, if you saw the house beforehand and afterhand, um, you wouldn't notice any difference to the house at all, or anything on the property, uh, we'll be lifting up the house physically in place, uh, demoing out the existing, um, CMU foundation, it's a really old block foundation, it's got cracks, it lets some moisture through, especially during the rains. Demo the foundation, place a new foundation, all in kind, it is a full foundation, and then set the house back down untouched, um, in place, so no, um, no changes to the house, nothing of this sort, and, um, all the erosion controls and things will be put in place at the limit of work, um, which is shown on the plan. And then the only modification really to the footprint, there is no actual size increase of the footprint, but as you can see on the plan, there is a bulkhead accessing the basement on the front side of the property, that is going to be relocated to the backside of the property, um, of the house, you'll see there's a little corner, so it fits better, it's better, uh, usability-wise, as the bulkhead isn't in the front of the house, and it actually helps the overall setback, so that is going to increase the setback from the, on the front, um, from about twenty-three point one feet to about thirty, thirty-one feet. So it's existing non-conforming, we're making that, um, non-conformance better, um, in that sense, and it also is not detracting from the rear, um, setback, as you can see, there's another element to the house that is, you know, further outbound of that, um, of that bulkhead. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, Charlie, any, any letters to be read in the record, please?
Well, we have, uh.
Board of Health and.
Board of Health.
Conservation.
And Conservation, uh, relative to the, uh. Board of Health, the proposal was issued a negative determination by the Conservation Commission at their three-six-twenty-five public hearing, negative determination is an approval under, uh, RDA permit application, uh, this project will not impact any vegetation, nor will it impact the coastal bank above his own thereof, all work is contained within the existing house foundation footprint, and the Board of Health relative to Twelve Bay Road, only reconstruction of foundation, no change in habitable space, no comment, and there were no, uh, pieces of correspondence from, uh, Butters.
Okay, board questions?
Basically, lifting the house, putting it back down, setbacks not gonna change. The bulkhead's moving, but we don't count bulkheads in the setback, so that's kind of irrelevant. I mean, it does say there's a concrete slab wall. I guess that's staying there. I don't know what that is. Doesn't really matter.
What is it, like a patio?
It's, it's kind of like an outside rinse station. It's got some, a little fence around it and a slab, almost like a shed.
Are you getting rid of it? You're just keeping it there?
Keeping it untouched.
It's, it's already existing, so.
Existing and doesn't change.
Yeah, you're not, as long as you don't get closer to, it goes up, it goes back where it was. I have zero issues.
I've got no issues. Okay. David?
Very good, very good presentation. I have no issues. It definitely had to come to this board. Needs approval from the board. Very good presentation.
Alright, anybody in the audience have any questions? Yes, sir. Come on up. Which, either one of you, doesn't matter. And if you could give us your name and your address, please. You both together? Oh, perfect.
Bruce Fulton and-
Could you guys talk into the microphone, 'cause we're on TV here?
My name's Bruce Fulton, and I live in Brewster, but I own the house on Nine Point Road, which is directly across from Point Road, from George's project.
My name is, my name is Sam Fulton, and I live at Nine Point Road.
Okay. Each one of you separately give your questions or problems?
Whatever. Sure. Our questions come from the disruption to the street traffic caused by the proposed Benway basement remodel. Not remodel, but anyhow, we are concerned that this will result in an increase in traffic on the street, and will make it more difficult for fire trucks and emergency personnel to do their jobs.
Okay. And what do you have to say, sir?
We do not object to the project that they wanna do. I think George did a good job. We don't, we don't object to that project. We do, we do have two concerns relating to the project, and as, as Sam just brought up, this Point Road is a very narrow, dead-end road, dirt road. There is no parking on the road. There is no turning on the road. And because of that, we're concerned that some of these trucks that come in, that will be coming in to raise this house, might be sizable trucks, and they may not be able to get into the job that they have to get to. And they may end up having to park right on Point Road.
And Point Road is a town road?
Yes.
So, you, you understand you have the ability to call the police?
Okay. So, if, if, if someone decides they wanna park on, on Point Road, if someone decides they wanna park on Point, Point Road, and just wait, and do their job, and just wait until the police come, then that's their object.
Well, my point is, is this board very rarely, if ever, deals with a traffic issue on a public road. If it were a private road, then we'd have to talk about rights, et cetera. But this is a public road, and this board doesn't deal in traffic. Now, I can tell you, we're hoping that people don't, you know, park in the middle of the street, but you have rights if they do, and that's pick up the phone and call the police.
Okay. So, that's I-
But we don't deal with, unless this board chooses to, with traffic issues, lack thereof, cars parking, may or may not park in a public way. This is a public road. That's why I asked the question. That would be the police.
Yeah.
I guess that's it.
Right. Well, thank you for asking.
Do you have any idea how long the project will take?
Do I, do I?
No, I'm asking him.
Wait, wait. Let's finish with these two.
Okay.
You guys all set?
Yeah, it's, I was just concerned about access for emergency vehicles.
Uh, well, they should, if, if you see lack of access for emergency vehicle, I'd pick the phone up and call the police for that, too.
Yeah.
Might be just as easy to have the conversation between you guys.
But I mean, if you don't wanna have that conversation, you have a right for emergency access at all times at your home and other homes around you. So, if you don't see that, you call the police or talk to them.
Sure.
If we, we have four, five gallon buckets delineating our driveway from Point Road. And if they get knocked over and disturbed by the people working on the project-
That'd be a police question.
That's a police question also.
Yes, this board would not deal with-
Alright.
Alright. Thank you. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
So, you had a question, Mike, of, of Mr. Benway?
I'm just curious how long the project's gonna take, given their concerns.
Yeah, so, to address their concerns, I don't have an exact construction schedule laid out. I foresee it taking roughly five weeks. Now, some of that time is disconnecting utilities inside the house. Some of that time is cribbing and everything within the house, which obviously doesn't have outside disruptions. That would include any traffic. Also, I mean, they've been my neighbors for twenty-five years, so they should also note that we own three other properties on the road, all with parking. We have Two Point Road, the first house on, on the left.
That's okay, Mr. Benway. We're not dealing with those issues.
Agreed. Alright.
So, is that, did I answer your question, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Alright, so, anyone else in the audience have anything to say? Yes. Give me your name and your address, please. Feel free to sit down.
I've been sitting for two hours.
Well, you know what? Take a load off. What's another half hour, ten minutes, or whatever?
My name is John Keller. I live at Four Point Road with my wife, Anne. We were first acquainted with George and his younger brother at, they were probably five and six years old, and they come up to the door and said, "We're gonna be washing cars. Would you be interested?" You know, and the price was really right. I think it was a fifty cents or so. But that was back twenty years ago. So, in that time, we've watched them grow. We've seen how they per, put themselves forth on the, in the area. And I must say, they're a, a real good asset of the town. We enjoy their company, enjoy their parents' company, and the rest of the people on the road. You gotta realize that Point, Point Road is maybe a hundred yards long and it's dirt. I don't believe it is a town road, because we don't get any town services.
Well, the gentleman just alleged that it is a town road, so I can only take them by what they say.
Yeah. Well, I'll just disprove that, but that's not in your purview, anyway.
But I think this board will treat Mr. Benway very well.
Good.
That is our hope.
We approve of this project. We hope that you will.
Well, why don't you stick around five minutes?
Okay.
Watch this.
We will.
Okay.
The other thing is, the other thing is, is that we are adjacent to his property. He has full access to our driveway and to any of the land that-
Can I park there?
Sure. I don't know why you'd want to, but-
I thank you very much. It's getting late, but I think you'll find that everything will be just fine.
We'll talk with him and let him know that he-
We'll stick around two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
All those a favor? So, do I have a motion in reference to the application?
I do. But first, I'd like to say, Mr. Benway, thank you for an excellent presentation, and for being a, a good member of the Mashpee community.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. The motion, relative to Twelve Bay Road. Owners Elizabeth Claridge Benway and George Alfred Benway III. Trustees of the EC Benway Trust request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction of the foundation walls to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 114, parcel 34, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A, section six. Two, site plan, proposed house renovations for Twelve Bay Road, plan date, October 17, 2024, plan scale one inch equals ten feet, prepared by Falmouth Engineering. Number three, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number four, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number five, the board finds under 174-17 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood, and there are no new non-conformities being created. Congratulations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
All because of you two. Thank you.
You owe them a lot.
Sorry you had to listen to all of that to get to you. At least we ended on a good note.
Enjoy your night.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 12, 2025.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Do we have any additional topics?
No, I don't.
George, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like a good motion that we close tonight's meeting.
Second.
All those a favor?
Good night.
That's it. Word.